Good afternoon. This is a city commission work session, and the volume's up in here, I think. For Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, for the City of Largo, we'd like, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we're going to start tonight's meeting with a business spotlight.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commission. Today I have the pleasure to introduce Danielle Hutchins, Communication Specialist with Insurum. Insurum is an insurance brokerage firm focused on the Medicare community with roots here in Pinellas County. In just five years, they've grown to a team of over 200 with a capacity to reach over one-fourth of a million seniors per month. In 2020, Insurum was number one in Tampa Bay Business Journal's Fast 50 fastest-growing companies. The headquarters of Insurum is located at 8560 Olmerton Road. And with their continued, continued growth, they recently expanded their operations to include a second-floor office space. And so now they are the only occupants in this building, a first for them. And with that, I will go ahead and ask our first question. Danielle, can you tell us more about Insurum?
Sure. Well, I feel like you did my job very well. You did such a wonderful job. As Isabella mentioned, we are an insurance broker. We also provide insurance development services for insurance companies. And we are focused on the Medicare market, as she mentioned. So I'm not sure if you're aware here, but there's millions of U.S. citizens turning 65 every year and becoming Medicare-eligible. So that's the market we're focusing on. And we focus on providing Medicare solutions to them. And we partner with all of the large insurance brands you're probably familiar with. Aetna, Humana, United Healthcare, Mutual of Omaha, and many more. So partnering with these companies, we're able to provide a wide variety of products to our customers and pretty much be like a one-stop-shop experience for them. So with just one phone call to our agents, they're able to get Medicare health insurance, supplemental insurance, dental, vision, life insurance. So pretty much anything a senior would need in retirement, we can help them with as far as insurance. As Isabella mentioned, we were founded in 2016, and we've experienced massive growth in the last five years. So we're very excited to finally have a new home to call our own in Largo as we've grown out of our previous spaces very quickly. And we were, as a testament to our growth, we were just acquired by a private investment firm that's based out of Miami by the name of 777 Partners. So a lot of growth, a lot of change, a lot of opportunity with Insurum, and we're really excited to bring that here to Largo.
That's exciting. We love growth, and we love growth here in Largo. And with that, it leads me to my second question. Why did you choose Largo?
So we actually have some history in Largo. The first year and a half to about two years, we were based out of Largo. We were operating in a small annex within the offices of our angel investors, and they were off of 66th Street. So, you know, we really enjoyed being in Largo, but we, we grew out of that space fairly quick and moved to Clearwater, so not very far away. And again, grew out of that space within a couple of years. And when we were looking for a new home to place our headquarters, we wanted to stay within this area, mostly because it's pretty central for our employees. We did a lot of spatial mapping to ensure that we wouldn't be increasing anyone's commute too much if we stayed in the Largo area. So that, on top of the familiarity, we, we were just comfortable here. And we kind of had a lot of checkboxes with our new space. We wanted a standalone building, all to our own. We needed ample parking and room to grow because we kind of wanted to stay put for a while since we had moved so much. And, you know, with such an exhaustive list, it took a while for us to find a space that we felt comfortable with. And we worked very closely with Herod Properties. They were amazing the whole, the whole way. They really made us feel like we made the right choice staying in Largo. They helped us sublease the building. As you said, we had the first floor first, and we were able to bring employees in there prior to our fall enrollment season last October, before we sent them back home for COVID. And now we are excited to open that second floor and start bringing the rest of our operations staff back in.
That's exciting stuff.
Yes.
And you all are looking to bring them back this year, I think you mentioned earlier?
Yeah, so we actually are going to start bringing back about a third of our workforce next week. That includes me. So if anyone wants to come and get a tour, just let me know. I can show you around. So we're going to give them a hybrid schedule to start out with until further notice. Basically, they'll be doing three days in office and then two days work from home. And then we'll be bringing our sales agents and the rest of the contact center staff back sometime before October, since October is, that's when we do about 40% of our business with the Medicare annual enrollment period.
Great. And I know you all have experienced such great growth. Have you all experienced any challenges?
Of course. There's always challenges with growth. And I know a lot of businesses, you guys probably speak to, experience this coming out of the post-pandemic climate. The biggest challenge right now is just being aware of how different people have different levels of comfortability with returning. You know, you and I were speaking a little bit about this before the meeting, but a lot of people are not comfortable with it, and a lot of people are excited to come back. So we're trying to take all of that into consideration and be mindful. But it is causing some challenges with not only finding new talent when you're competing against businesses that have moved 100% work from home, but also keeping our talented individuals we have now. So that's a big one for us. And, you know, we're working very hard to create a safe and comfortable environment within this new office. We're decking it out with all the latest technology, and we're making sure everyone has ample workspace so they, they can distance if they need to. So hopefully, you know, it'll be a smooth transition for everyone.
Yeah, hopefully with all the renovations and new technology, like you said, individuals are going to be excited to come back to a new workspace.
Yes. That's hope.
That's what we all hope, yeah. And our last question, what can Largo do for you?
So, you know, there's actually another challenge I, I'd like to mention that kind of plays into that. And it's, we're going to be investing a pretty substantial amount of money into some new media channels focused on local brand awareness. So, you know, we spent the last five years really growing, building our staff, building our services and our offerings. And now that we've got that growth, we want to focus on building Insurum into like a household name for seniors looking for health insurance. And we want to start doing that in the Largo area, since that's our home. And, you know, we've had the recent press with the Tampa Bay Business Journal and our, our awards and stuff. So, you know, with any, anytime you enter into a new media channel, that comes with its own challenges and risks. So that's something that's pretty top of mind for us right now. So as far as what Largo can do to help, any branding or co-branding opportunities that can help get our name out there. Not only are we looking for online traffic, but we're also looking for foot traffic as well. The new office opening off of Olmerton does, it is set up for in-office appointments and walk-ins for anyone who's looking for an insurance consultation. In addition to that, I mean, you know, any PR we can get, we were talking a little bit about doing maybe a ribbon cutting. We had an awesome experience with the Pasco EDC earlier this year when we opened our Satellite Contact Center. They had several of the city commissioners come out, do a ribbon cutting. They also helped us with submitting a press release. They helped us write one, and they shared with all of their contacts. So we got a lot of traction from that. That was really nice. Other than that, I think that's really about it, you know, getting us in front of the Largo people. I mean, we're here to provide great jobs for the local talent and great consultative services for local seniors. We're willing to work with any, you know, career development resources you have, veteran services. We're offering, you know, very stable, well-paying jobs, starting anywhere from about $60,000 a year to even over six figures for our sales agents. And we provide full licensing and contracting. We pay for that for them, which is, you know, a great, we're finding that to be a great opportunity for veterans. So if you guys have any resources there, we'd love to hear that.
Of course, yeah. We can definitely be in touch, of course, with the ribbon cutting and getting you in touch with different career development services. It's great that you all are trying to hire local within our workforce and the labor force. And it's great what you're doing with the seniors, you know, Medicare and insurance overall can be complicated, so.
Very complicated.
They definitely, yeah. Any help is appreciated there. And for any more information, so anyone can visit insurum.com. And then their licensed insurance agents are available Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and can be reached at 844-847-3800. And with that, I will open up to any questions from our city commissioners.
Any questions?
No, I'm just looking, you're building up on Google Maps.
Do they update the address yet? Because we've been waiting for them to do that for a while now.
Is it where the university was?
It is. Shiller University.
So it's right out, almost on Olmerton at that intersection?
Yep, pretty much right on the corner. Yeah, it's a great spot.
It is a great spot.
Yeah, I would just like to say welcome back to Largo. We're excited to have you back. And I have a really big pair of scissors that I can bring to a ribbon cutting, so let us know when that is.
We'll count you for that.
Is your space big enough for all 200 employees?
Yes, so.
It's a really big space.
It's a very big space. I think we're going to have about 70 employees upstairs when we come back next week. And they're only at half-capacity with that. And then the downstairs can fit, I think, 100 agents and then about 20 additional staff. And they, they're only going to be staffing at about half-capacity. So we've got plenty of room, plenty of room to grow.
We are in the process of designing a new city hall, so we may reach out to you to schedule a tour to see if we can get some ideas from you.
We'll have to get you on the phone with Mike Aha. He loves that stuff. He's our Director of Technology and Infrastructure, so, and he can tell you all the latest tech to include and all of that stuff.
Great. So you said you were just acquired by, by private investors?
Yes.
777? That must be pretty exciting and scary.
It's, it's both. You know, there's obviously challenges when you make a big change like that. You know, we just went through changing all of our benefits and all that stuff that tends to scare people. But it's a very good move for us. It's a very strategic partnership. They can, they'll definitely be able to handle our growth and set us up for success.
And they're going, they're going to, you know, they're going to stay in Largo, right?
Yes.
They're not going to move you to Miami?
No, they're very happy with our home here, too, so.
Great.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, it was a pleasure. Thank you.
Next, we will hear a presentation on the Alice Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. I'm used to saying good evening, so it's nice to see you a little bit earlier in the day today. This is my first time being here without having a laptop to control, so I'm having faith that it's uploaded and ready to go. So I'm going to just quickly introduce Douglas Grisenhauer. Did I say it right? Oh, he's the Director of Workforce Development and Financial Stability at the United Way Sun Coast. Throughout United Way Sun Coast, he helps communities connect to strong, stable jobs and also leads programs that allow individuals to make the most of their assets, including the VITA Tax Program and the Bank On program. He enjoys, he's served this community for over 10 years and has worked before that in three different anti-poverty research centers before his time with United Way. So I'm going to turn it over to Doug, and your presentation should be coming up here.
Yes, excellent. So thank you again for having the time for me to be able to speak to you all. As mentioned, I'm Doug, and I'm here to talk to you about what's known as the Alice Report. And so as that PowerPoint comes up, just a quick, I don't know if anyone's heard, has anyone heard of the Alice Report itself? Some, I see some head nods. Okay, perfect. So that's good news, so that there are individuals who are aware of this process and of what's going on. So again, for those who are less familiar, the Alice Report is an acronym that stands for Individuals Who Are Asset Limited, Income Constrained, But Employed. Excellent. And I will drive about this presentation on PowerPoint. So again, individuals who are making more than the poverty level but still struggling to get by. And so I'll be very honest, this topic will get fairly serious. There will be some serious topics, but I try to bring it up at the end, so at least we don't leave fairly depressed. So when people have talked about what is the Alice Report, you know, they say, well, we already have a line that exists in America. It's called the federal poverty line. Why need another one? And so some fun history lesson is the federal poverty line was actually established by the researcher by the name of Dr. Molly Orshansky. And Dr. Orshansky was a very good researcher in her time and was tasked with figuring out how many people in America are not getting by. And that "not" is important. How many people are not doing okay? And as a good researcher, she, in the 1960s, used best available data, which was 1955 Department of Agriculture data. And at that point, there was high, medium, and low values of a basket of goods in America. She took that low basket of goods, multiplied it by three, because at that time, people spent about a third of their income on those goods, called it the federal poverty line. That is the federal poverty line we use in 2021, adjusted for inflation, of course. But 1955 is a lot different than 2021. Our basket of goods didn't even exist back then. The things that we rely on to get jobs, to get to places, to be successful, just simply didn't exist back then. We know that individuals, instead of spending about a third of their income on goods and services, that now is at the bottom of the list in terms of highest costs of things. Now it's mostly childcare and housing that people are spending their income and goods on. And so again, this poverty line itself is, very frankly, broken as a tool that we use. And people know that, right? Federal government uses 185% of the federal poverty line, 135%. They use percent modifiers in order to try to get to close to these lines. But if you're using a percentage modifier on a broken tool, you still get a broken tool. And what's fascinating, what's the most fascinating about this is actually, I've been giving this presentation for years now. And one time, a woman raised her hand at this point, which people don't ask questions about this point. So I was kind of taken aback, and I was bold, and so I asked her to raise her hand. And she said that she was a woman from the National Association of Social Workers, and she interviewed Dr. Orshansky, which made me a little nervous, but she told me that this information was correct, except for one thing. And that was, it wasn't a high, medium, and low basket of goods back in the 50s. There was four. There was high, medium, low, and crisis. And this crisis basket of goods was designed for individuals who just lost their home, just lost their spouse, just lost their job, and was in a state of crisis that they could get into. And Dr. Orshansky believed that no one should live their entire lives in crisis, so she used the low one instead. And when she brought it to her superiors, they told her that using that higher-low bar would have too many people below the federal poverty line, and she had to use the crisis one. In 1960, when they created the federal poverty line, they knew that it was inadequate. And it's the tool we use today to figure out how many people are doing okay or not. And so we need a better tool. And so some researchers came around recently, I say recently, the past 20 years or so, developing what's known as the Alice Report. I like to call Alice as a fairly odd-sounding acronym that describes a very serious situation of individuals who are asset limited, income constrained, but employed. These are individuals who have jobs, they're working and working hard, but their income is still constrained going directly into costs. And because of that, they're very limited in the assets that they can get. I do have on this slide, but I want to share, unitedforalice.org backslash Florida has all of the resources available. I see some of you have computers. Feel free to go and look at it. Some of the slides I'll be pulling is from this data. Please use it. Share and share alike. This information is for public use. It is encouraged to be used for the community. And what it shows is who is Alice. Well, in Florida, there's about 7.8 million households, and of those, 13% are in that poverty line, below that line that already itself was difficult. But then on top of that, there's another 33% of individuals that are above poverty but still not making ends meet. And what does that mean? Well, it's what they did with Alice is they broke it down, instead of just having a basket of goods, they broke it down into seven common costs: housing, childcare, food, transportation, healthcare, some miscellaneous overflow, and taxes. And when they're looking at these cost overruns, they're looking at the most basic needs here. We're talking about food. It is careful purchasing with no eating out. When we're talking about housing, it is below average size and cost, including utilities into the numbers we're about to see. And I want to share just a second on childcare, because on childcare, it is the cheapest legal home-based childcare that we're looking at here. And I happen to have an 11-month-old daughter. She turns 12 on July 8th, or 12 months, one-year-old.
It'll be 12.
When you, she's going to turn 12 real fast. That's what everyone tells me that.
Three than you expect.
But, so when we were looking for her, we were looking for childcare for her. And I'll tell you, when we were looking for childcare, we were looking for the best of the best, right? We were looking for, you know, somewhere that was NACI-accredited, that was going to get her, you know, to be excelling, that she was going to be, you know, loved and cared for, that was safe, that was quality childcare, that met all the Apple standards, you know, what have you. And we were looking for the best. Individuals in Alice want that exact same childcare, but they can afford cheap and they can afford legal. And those are the adjectives they afford. And those adjectives afford them childcare that is thrown in this graph. Now, I'm told to never use a graph in a presentation that has this many numbers, but I do it anyway because I think it's important to really look at the actual dollar values that we're talking here. And what's interesting is you can break it down. This is the Alice Survival Budget in Florida that, for example, if we look at housing, has two adults and two kids in childcare at 939. With the Alice Report, it does a very interesting thing that the federal poverty line doesn't do, is it breaks it down by county in order to see how much it costs in our area. So for example, I took Alice's selected counties in Florida, which in this case is Hillsborough, Pinellas, Sarasota, DeSoto, and Manatee Counties. United Way Sun Coast is a five-county area. And so breaking it down by that, it costs more to live in our area, because of course it does, right? It costs more to live in Pinellas County than it does to live in DeSoto County. And it breaks that down to see how much does it really cost to live here. Federal poverty line has a family of four in Largo, is a family of four in Manhattan, is a family of four in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. The federal poverty line is the same across the board. And that's ridiculous, right? Because it costs more to live here than in Iowa, and it costs less to live here than in Manhattan. On the same lines, a family of four that are two adults and two children in high school is a family of four of a single mom with three children that are young. That's a family of four for the federal poverty line, four and four, which just logistically speaking, is ridiculous. And so the Alice threshold breaks it down by geography and by household type to see what does it really cost to get by. And so when we look at two adults with two kids in childcare, housing here is a little over $1,000. Childcare is at $1,274. I don't know if, I heard a bit of a chuckle to my left, because if you can find housing or childcare for these rates, please let me know, because I'm not paying that. And probably a lot of people aren't either. And so when we're looking at these numbers, what I tell you is they're extremely conservative when we're trying to get these rates. So try to get the most bare-bones levels. It's not talking about housing that exists, but housing in theory that could exist. And even using those bare-bones levels, two adults with two kids in childcare, it costs $74,000 annually to get by. And I want to really, you know, bring this home, because $74,000 is a lot of money. But when you break it down by each line item, that's what it costs. That's what it costs in order to get by. But I want to share you that all of these data points, and you'll notice if you were looking at these graphs, are all of Florida from 2018. To use the best data that we have available to us, we have to use census data and Bureau Labor Statistics that's available to us. And so that's what we have before the pandemic hit. And so again, if you don't like charts and graphs, here's just a graphical representation of what you're looking at. On the far right, a federal poverty level for four individuals is that little bitty thing on the gray. And looking directly to the right of it is a household survival budget for two adults and two kids in childcare. Again, if you don't care to look at the numbers, this graph itself will show you, it costs a lot to get by in our communities. And that was all before 2018, or before 2020. Things were actually getting better in terms of Alice, but systemic inequity continued to plague what we were looking at. And all of this, though, has to be looked through that lens of COVID-19. The conversation we're talking about, when we talk about Alice, are individuals who are one missed paycheck, one broken car, one health bill away from poverty, one disaster away from crisis. And we just experienced about 15 months of crisis in our community. And those individuals struggled. Everyone was one disaster away from happening, and we had an entire year of it last year. And so what does that mean for people in our community? Well, throwing up some data, so Alice data itself was 2018, but we have more recent information that can give us some proxies here. If we look at unemployment, again, so if we're looking here, unemployment rates, this is from 2000 up through 2020. Obviously, you'll notice, the most obvious glaring thing is unemployment hit peak-high levels in April of 2020. We all know this, right? Great Depression-level era unemployment of 14.7%. And now things have gotten better, but notice that we are not anywhere near the 3.6 that we were in the beginning of 2020. You know, unemployment is not back to where it was. There are still individuals struggling. But more importantly is I want to point to that spike that we see on that graph, because it looks like just such a little spike. But those months of unemployment where individuals were having to scrape to get by, and that little spike was months and months of individuals having to figure out how they're going to pay their bills, how they're going to get by, how they're going to pay for food. And we've heard story after story at United Way, and we have neighborhood centers, and we talk to individuals. And we hear people talking about missing medications and hoping that everything's being okay. We hear a story of individuals taking out payday loans and taking out other loans that they know aren't good for them, but they need it in order to get by, in order to move forward. And so I want to show you that there's this little blip here, and for the most part, our economy is recovering. And that's good, and that's to be celebrated. But story after story tells us that the recovery for our economy will not be the recovery for our Alice households. It will take months and years on top of what's happening for the families in our community to be as recovered as the economy looks. Real quick, just to nerd out you for a second. Oh, yes, question?
Yeah, sorry, because I'm looking forward to nerding out as well. But when you, when you said that the recovery for Alice doesn't happen as quickly, I mean, I think we can all understand. we can all understand why, but is, do you know what that difference is? How long of?
So they haven't been able to quantify it specifically. I do have a couple of slides later that I'll speak to that, so keep that in the back of your brain for later. Uh, but what I'll tell you right now is that they haven't been able to quantify those pieces, but what they have seen, uh, we can use corollaries, so individuals that take out payday loans, um, it typically takes them around three years to pay those back on average. Um, when we look at individuals who are taking out costs, um, uh, evictions and things like that, we know that individuals, so luckily, uh, there is a lot of rental assistance that's available, but unfortunately, we do know some people are still falling through the cracks, and we know if an individual has one eviction on their record, that, for the state of Florida, lasts a lifetime for them to be able to make it harder for them to get eviction support. So back to normal is a hard definition, because some of these families don't have normal anymore. Um, if they have an eviction on their record, because those things can't be expunged, landlords have the full right to be able to double security deposits, even if that eviction took place because of COVID. And that will always be true for their record. Um, so normal, it depends on the type of definition you have, honestly.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Real quick here, I don't want to talk, um, about, we just mentioned unemployment rates. And again, I'll be very quick for those who don't care, but for those who do, to be unemployed, you have to file for unemployment, which sounds like a technicality, but it's really important, because to be unemployed, you need to file, and when filing, it shows that you're part of the labor force. The labor force has actually been steadily decreasing for the past two decades in, in, and this is of course for the US, uh, but we see it also in true in Florida, and we see there's giant plummet that happened because the recession, uh, the recession, the pandemic. But then the recovery you notice was not necessarily all there. There are a lot of individuals that have simply left the labor force, um, because of this, and the implications on that are real. And so again, peeling back those onions of people talking about unemployment getting back to normal, and that is true, and that is to be celebrated, but that is one piece of a very complicated puzzle when looking at economics and looking at our recovery. And this is another piece to look at that shows that there is just a lot of work to do. The next three are three pie charts that I think are fascinating. And this is, the US Census does what's called a Household Pulse Survey, in which they have been surveying people since the pandemic started and simply asked them questions. So this is not reality. These are people's opinions of what they believe to be true about their life. Um, and so we know there's some variation here, um, but what's important here is they asked, the US Census asked individuals, and this data is as of May 20, May 24th, so even less than a month old, they asked for renters, do you believe, what is the likelihood that you will be evicted from your home in the next two months? And renters in Florida, more than half of them, either thought it was very likely or somewhat likely that they will not be living in the home that they have right now in two months. And now we know 50% of individuals aren't gonna be evicted in two months, like this data isn't exactly the end-all, be-all. But think about the mental health of individuals in our families, when more than half of our renters don't know where they're going to live in August. Think about that for yourself. If you didn't know where you would live in August, and 12% of them believe it, it's very likely they don't know where they're going to live in two months. How does that affect your planning? How does that affect how you take care of your kids? How does that affect how you apply for jobs? How does that affect your general stress about life? And so there is a lot of stress that we see in our communities and in our lives, um, and this is just one pulse to have it on there. Now, for homeowners, it's a little less, but still, one out of five, 21% of all homeowners in Florida, believe it's very or somewhat likely that they're gonna leave their home due to foreclosure in the next two months. And then driving it even more, individuals' confidence to pay next month's rent. One out of every four, or 25% of all renters in Florida that were surveyed through the census, have little confidence that they will pay next month's rent. 9%, little under 10, one out of 10 individuals have no confidence that they will pay next month's rent. These are individuals' real-life opinions and real-life perspectives on what's happening, and individuals are stressed. And I think, you know, when we look at how we're recovering and how we're rebounding, making sure that we're rebounding for everyone is important, because today, as I'm talking to you, these individuals believe these things as they're surveyed. They're worrying about these things, just as they're talking about getting their job and taking their kid to soccer practice and making sure they go to church on Sunday, they're also in the back of their head saying, how am I gonna pay rent? And that's important to note as we're doing our work and as we're focusing.
This is Florida, right? This is in Pinellas, this is just?
This is Florida, yes. So this, the US Census, uh, and I'll tell you, the Household Pulse, the Household Pulse Survey doesn't survey everyone like the Census does, and so we can't get into specific uh, data points, or else it gets a little wobbly with the data.
Okay.
And so the deepest they could go is Florida. Um, I tried to peel down, uh, but then there was a wavering of like 10 or 15 percentage point, it was ridiculous. And so we, this is Florida, correct, not Pinellas, not even Largo, but it does give us a story of what we're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
And so now I want to go back to talking about the ALIS report. This is 2018 data, so let's go back in time a little bit, about how we were doing, at least as a community. And as we see, you know, across all of Florida, poverty rate was going down. Now granted, it was going down by one percentage point, but what percentage point's actually significant when you're talking about millions and millions of people, right? We also see that ALIS thresholds were themselves being fairly steady and being okay. When you look at our counties, we see about the same is true. But that's not necessarily true for all families. And so all areas need support. Rural Florida was the greatest below ALIS, but there are areas in our community that also struggled. Let's talk about you all, because obviously you care most about Largo. You should, you live here. Um, I have an arrow of you are here that you probably don't need, because you all know where Largo is, but, uh, as we see here, ALIS in Pinellas County, again, 2018, shows that the unemployment rate was about 5%. ALIS households were 35%, and households in poverty were 11%. And so that's that top left is a banner of the ALIS in Pinellas County. Bring your eyes now to the bottom right, talking about specifically Largo City, Florida. Your poverty rate is below, uh, the poverty rate in Florida, which is fantastic. That's very good news of what's looking at. But what you see also, though, is your ALIS percentage is actually considerably higher. And so you have a lot of individuals that aren't at the end, all be all, struggling in poverty, but there are a lot of individuals that are struggling. And in fact, individuals above the ALIS threshold is about 46%. And now I'll tell you, these are individuals who are struggling with something, right? We can't pinpoint specifically what that is, and every household and every family budgets differently and lives their lives differently. But what I'll tell you is when you're leaving this meeting today, if we walk by someone in the street, it is a coin flip whether or not they're worrying about something on their budget. It is a coin flip to figure out whether or not they are stable, or whether or not they're trying to figure out how they can make ends meet, and if they're gonna sacrifice food or childcare or housing or healthcare.
Uh, question, so ALIS measures only people who are employed?
So, no.
Okay.
And that's a very important misdemeanor that every, which is why, again, this is being recorded, but I'll say it anyway, I don't like the ALIS acronym.
Okay.
It is not individuals who are just employed, it was done to spell the name ALIS. It is specifically individuals.
Well, that's important.
That's very important.
Yeah.
You gotta have an acronym. Um, but it, to be accurate, it is individuals who are above the federal poverty line, but below that threshold of annual total that you see right there.
Right.
And so it's regardless of your employment status, um, these are individuals that, you know, it's regardless of any other components, it's simply looking at their, at their income, and whether it's above poverty or below those thresholds.
Okay.
Very important question, thank you.
So in Florida, a large portion of these people that are ALIS are probably retired?
So, that's very interesting, because if you look at the right, there's a senior budget, and they break it down by seniors, and I believe, uh, yes, we have a slide on age, so.
Maybe not logically, but some, yeah.
But so actually, so you're, let's, let's pull it right here. So actually, this breaks it down by individuals, and what we find is, you're right, there are a lot of individuals who are in ALIS that are seniors, um, but it's a non-negligible group that's also our working-age adults, and a lot of them, if your head of household is under 25, understandably so, they're struggling a lot more with, with what's going on in ALIS. But you are correct. Um, I'll tell you that we have a very, very good safety net for our seniors in making sure they're not in poverty. That safety net does not extend to being above ALIS, and you can see that in this chart right here. You're exactly right. Um, but you see here, again, 25 to 44, and the 45 to 64, your working-age adult populations are still at the 25 and 27% of ALIS. And if you compare that again to that chart here of, you know, 31%, it's a little less, but still pretty significant of what's there of our working-age adults that are in ALIS. Um, and breaking it down a little more, um, breaking it down by family household types, this is actually something that fascinated me when we were at this, is that individuals in ALIS aren't necessarily just families with children. There are a lot of single or cohabitating adults that also are struggling, um, in order to make ends meet, which I thought was very interesting, because when you look at poverty rates, families with children are much more likely to be in poverty. Uh, that's not necessarily the case for our ALIS thresholds, even for our single, uh, households. What is interesting, and this again is, is a bit of a no-brainer when you look at it, um, but households that have two earners are obviously much less likely to be in ALIS than those that have single-parent households. Um, now, this is the census, and so it only breaks down, uh, the household types into three: married, single female, single male-headed households. We know that there's probably as many different household types as there are households in our community, but we have the data that we have. Uh, but I think it is very telling to show you that the married households are significantly more likely to be above ALIS than single-parent households, understandably so, right? If you have two incomes versus one, it's more likely to be able to make it to that threshold, or if you have one income and someone who's able to watch the kids, they don't have to have that childcare cost. One thing I do want to show you, and again, this is looking at selected counties, and so it isn't Largo specifically, but the number of single male and single female-headed households are 37% of all households with children in our community. And so there are a lot of single-parent households that are out there. It's a, it's a, it's non-negligible, the number of single-family households that are out there, and those that are out there are struggling. Also bringing it down to your perfect question by age, uh, we do see that seniors are most likely to be struggling, but there is a lot of individuals, um, in our working-age population that are ALIS and that are struggling as well. Um, and then breaking it down, um, by race and ethnicity, uh, what we notice here is that poverty trends and ALIS trends do follow with each other. Um, I wanted to break down this, uh, this specific slide, though, because again, this was ALIS in 2018, and I wanted to find more accurate data on what's information when we're looking at inequalities, um, that exists, as we want to build up equity in all of our work. And so I want to pull to that unemployment chart that we looked at way before. So again, this is the same data, the exact same chart of what we were looking at before, but this time, instead of looking from 2000, I pulled it to just look at this year and look at the pandemic. And I broke it, broke it down by sex and by black or white. There are a lot of different ways to look at it, but I just broke it down by these four. And so what you see here, I do have white male, you have black male, white female, black female, and those are according to these charts here. And I want to show you something that's fascinating, is that, so the, the pandemic hit, and unemployment peaked. Again, those Depression-level-era unemployment of, you see of that peak, did not affect everyone the same way. What we find here, which is really interesting, is, is that the peak was very different, depending on the individuals. But more importantly, the recovery looks very different, breaking it down by sex and by race, is that you notice is that white male unemployment only hit about 12%, only, I say only, it's a lot, 12.5% is very significant, right? It was very serious for everyone. And then the white male recovery, uh, bottomed out. You then look to the purple line, which is white women, that had significantly more difficulties, um, in unemployment there, but their recovery has now been about online, um, with white males. And then you look at the blue and the green lines, which are black or African-American men and black or African-American women, and you see that that recovery hasn't happened as uniformly. And so again, this is United States data, and so I want to, you know, preface that with this information. But what we see here is that our black counterparts, our black households have not been recovering from the pandemic at the same way. Um, and so there was a question about how deluged does it take to recover? Well, some individuals are still recovering and are still in COVID, uh, while others have recovered fully from it. It has not been uniform in terms of this recovery. And just real quick, I want to share that, looking at, again, May data, so last month's data, the black households of last month, the, the difference between the black households last month and white male households at the peak Great Depression-level unemployment is only a difference of about two percentage points. And so again, when we're talking about recovery and we're talking about how does our community recover, we also need to be acknowledging that it does not recover uniformly. And so we need to be sure that we're aware of this as we're doing this work. Um, again, the first step is awareness, and then the next step is action. And so, you know, I want to be clear that this is all very sobering information, but it's now information that we can have, and it's information that we can do things about it. And we have been doing things throughout our communities. Um, there have been people who have been coming together and banding together to build supports and structure in our neighborhoods, in our cities, and in our counties, to great success. And so I do want to show real quick that there are ways to respond, that we have, as a community, responded, to make sure that people have been more successful. We have been able to provide rapid response to individuals who are hit hardest by this pandemic. We've been able to support and enforce our work around education in our community and financial stability, making sure that people can get over, uh, the barriers that happen, but also making sure that individuals can have some level of success in education. It's an entirely different presentation, talking about the education level of individuals and how schools have responded to this, but we need to be acknowledging it as we're doing this work. Most importantly, we need to just see this information and let it sit with us for a while, and really talk about educating and advocating about the real magnitude of individuals in need, and how those individuals are in our backyard. I think one thing that, you know, you talk about a lot of news sources, and I've been paying attention to what's going on, a lot of people have been talking about the recovery of our country from pandemics, and the fact that the recovery has actually been a lot faster than a recession, because our pandemic was a natural disaster, in, in effect, it wasn't a financial one. Um, and since the core was a natural disaster, recovery has happened a lot faster for a lot of different places in our community. But I think hopefully this data will show us that that recovery is not uniform, and so there's a lot more work to be done. Um, and again, we're doing this work, we're pushing forward, but I think the most important thing we understand is we need to continue to advocate and advance for practices that help people get enough to get by. Um, because as a lot of people have said that, you know, we're, I've even heard, you know, some stories about people saying, well, pandemic's over, we've been vaccinated, we're recovered, everything's great. Um, and that is true for some in our community. I don't want to dispute that. Some people in our community have recovered, some people have excelled during the pandemic and have been able to be more successful with what's going on, but there are a lot of people who haven't. And so again, I, uh, I do want to end on a hopeful note, because I admit that all of this is very sobering information. Um, it's all available, it's all public, and I'm happy to share this with you, but I think in the end, we can do something about this, and we can make sure, we have an awareness to make sure that our community can recover uniformly, by, by just having a focus on making sure that everyone is given the opportunity to grow and develop and recover. So that's all I have to share with you all today. Um, do you have any questions or any thoughts about what we just covered? I know it was a lot.
Is this PowerPoint available to us somewhere to download?
I can make it available, not to download, but I can send it your way. So I, I've just built this myself, and so I can send it your way.
I have a copy of it.
Oh, then, there we go. Arrow can send it out to you all, um, to have this information. So I will say, yeah, so, Arrow can send it out to you all to have this information. All of us individuals, the sources are listed at the bottom, but it's all through unitedforalice.org, um, or through Bureau of Labor Statistics and things like that. Yes? Good question.
Doug also facilitates a Financial Stability Network every six weeks, is it?
Yes.
Okay.[1636.99] And we have different entities from nonprofit agencies to our CRA banks, all sorts of folks involved in that. We have Carissa and I participate on a regular basis as well as Julian Perez. But some of the big things we've heard lately about it is the mental health aspect as people are returning to work, the trauma and crisis that they've gone through for the last year and then trying to figure out how to piece together showing back to work and childcare, you know, when you don't get that first paycheck and everything like that. So that's been a big part of our discussion, as well as retooling the workforce has also been a big part lately, that the, the jobs that are available, the manufacturing industry, for example, didn't get hit nearly as hard as the leisure and hospitality sector. And so a lot of the jobs that are available right now, too, the skill sets, there's a mismatch there. So that's been a big topic at the Stability Network meetings as well, so.
Is, is there, I, I, I think here in the city of Largo, you know, we've, I think we've been trying to do as much as possible. And Arrow has been a fantastic help with keeping us up to speed and, and, you know, letting us know what, what we need to do as a, as a, as a governing body, but is there anything else that we, that the city of Largo particularly can do to, to help, you know, this process along?
Yes. And so I will say, first of all, some of the things that you can do, you've been doing, and Arrow's been sharing on this, you know, it's a lot of these making sure that there are resources available for individuals to stem that gap that's been going on. A lot of conversations about rental assistance and utility assistance that's been useful. One thing to be, you know, assured of is making sure that those assistances that are available, making sure that there aren't too many onerous barriers on certification on those has been a really big deal. We've had conversations with 211 here in Pinellas of individuals that they've had to try to apply for rental assistance and they've needed to be able to provide proof that they were laid off. And unfortunately, some of these workers walked up to their place of employment, saw a sign that said, we're closed, and that was their sign that they were fired. Like, they didn't get a letter, they don't have an HR. And so there are some of these barriers that may not seem on the front end to be really big issues, but a lot of individuals have trouble even providing documentation. And so having the ability to work with individuals, to help them almost navigate this process is extremely useful. Because unfortunately, I've had conversations with individuals who very much could benefit from these services, but after trying and trying 12, you know, someone actually said they tried 13 times, not here in Largo luckily, but tried 13 times to get through supports, and they gave up because they said it's just not worth it. It's just not worth the stress. And so being able to remove as many barriers to people being able to accept and receive those services is huge, being able to get those. Also making sure that you all, and you've been doing a good job with this as well, connecting with the county supports that are out there as well, and even the state supports. So again, our Florida that just got issued, I believe, two weeks ago, that's also offering rental assistance, being able to cascade those supports. Because there are some things Largo can do, there are some things Pinellas can do, and there are some things the state of Florida can do, and all of those can benefit Largo residents. And so being able to cascade that information to make it so that you're all a one-stop-shop is extremely beneficial. Because the individuals who are looking for support are stressed and are trying to get support as they're moving from their first job to their second job, if they're lucky to still have two jobs right now. And so time is extremely valuable. And so the most, the ways that you can make the most streamlined, you'll get the best results from what's going on to get those supports.
We also have a few agreements coming to the commission at the next meeting and then one in July for our CDBG COVID money that we got that is focused on economic stability and eviction prevention specifically with that individualized approach to look at what are your individual barriers to getting back on your feet and, you know, even as far as connecting with mental health services and childcare and transportation. So those are coming out very soon. I'm excited that we can offer those to the community and the residents that are in this situation recovering from pandemics.
So an objective observer, go do that.
All right.
No, but it's, it's a very good question. It's, and I think the more ways that we can make it easier for people to be able to get themselves back on their feet, the better, is all I'd say.
Great presentation. I mean, obviously very knowledgeable about, about all this information and, and, yeah, I mean, it is a little, I don't know if depressing is the right word, but it's, it's very eye-opening and, and to, to know, you know, some of the, some of the factors that are going on here in our own city. So thank you for giving us all that information. Yeah, thank you.
So I don't know if this is a question yet. I have a very dear friend of mine who lives on SSI. His income is $794 a month. So the home where he was living with family went into foreclosure. He didn't own it, they just went into foreclosure, and he had to find another place to live. And that was impossible. So what kind of help is available for a person like this?
That is a tricky one, and it's, your friend is not alone. So I've heard a lot of stories like that. So again, we have, Arrow mentioned that we do our volunteer income tax assistance program. I've been participating in it for four or five years now. I do people's taxes, and when you're doing someone's taxes, you see lives like that laid open of individuals struggling to find a place. And affordable housing is a struggle right now. Trying to find somewhere to live anywhere is a difficult point. And so there are conversations that we've been having on a multi-county level basis on increasing affordable housing stock. Unfortunately, that doesn't solve your friend's problem because they have a problem today. And these conversations are ones that are trying to increase the stock over the course of multiple years.
And Largo does a great job.
They do.
An outstanding job.
Yes.
I just want to put that in the record.
No, they do. But, you know, there's always a need for increased affordable housing stock and supports, and it's individuals like that that are struggling that were having a hard time finding a home last year. It's very difficult to find, even a place to rent these, these times in terms of individuals to get supports and services. And so, you know, there are, 211 is a resource that individuals have gotten. We've actually looked at the data throughout 211, and housing supports has been number one every month this entire year of individuals getting that. You know, they have time, obviously 211 is overburdened themselves, so it does take some time to get through, but they have a lot of housing support services available for individuals like your friend.
He's been in touch with all of the agencies because I gave him all the numbers.
Yeah.
There are, one, that tool that we did use for some referrals during the pandemic too, is there's a program called Home Share Pinellas.
He called them, he's been in touch with them. Guess what? Nothing available.
Oh.
And that's, and that's the unfortunate truth is that there is a larger issue of housing affordability. Housing stock was a problem in 2018. It's a crisis in 2021. And so the more conversations we can have about building up affordable housing stock, the better we can have. Because, and again, this is a completely different conversation, but housing rates, when you look at pandemic issues, housing rates is actually the only thing. Housing costs have been going up consistently throughout the pandemic. Everything else has been leveling off. Housing rates, it's been, it's a great time to sell your home right now, right? And, but that's lead to huge issues on making it a seller's market and not for buyers right now, which complicates individuals who are just, not even just looking for a home, but looking for an affordable home. It compounds that factor for sure. And unfortunately, if they've looked through every route, I mean, the answer is that we just need more homes, and that's not something you solve tomorrow.
I would argue that food has also gone up.
Yes.
For most, for most families. I, I appreciate the, the presentation and the information, and I certainly appreciate the work that's done here. I, I do think that the solution is, is multifaceted, if you will, you know, because, because if we're, can provide good training for people, if we can provide good jobs for people and help for people that, that need help, you know, all those things kind of, if we're, if we're a great place to live, but not, we don't have jobs, we don't have affordable housing, then it's going to be tough for these folks. So, so I, I really appreciate the stuff that economic development is doing to, to attract good businesses, like the business that we had here earlier today, who's, who's providing, I think she said 60 to $100,000 jobs for 200 people in Largo. So stuff like that is, is as important. It's not, it's not as important in the short term, but in the long term, it's as important as, as, as helping people out that are in a really tough, tough spot right now.
I, I think that what I've heard, a lot of solutions, according, going along with what you said, Mayor, these are temporary solutions to get people over a hump and hopefully, you know, they can get through their crisis and get to someplace where they can actually live.
The, the joke, that's not a funny joke, that we've used, is that when your house is on fire, I don't want to come up to you and say, hey, have you built a budget for this month? Like, we really should work on that.
Yeah.
Because yes, people should have budgets, but when your house is on fire, you have to put out the fire. And that's, you both, to combine, that's the exact answer that we have to do, is it's a both and. And unfortunately, it's complication, you know, if we had a silver bullet, shoot it today, right? Like, but there are, there's so many different things we have to go about to address it, and it has to be that combination of how do we make sure people can get their houses put out so that they're not on fire, but then also build that stability to make sure it doesn't catch on fire again.
Absolutely.
Right? And I think workforce is a huge component. I wrote down, the fact that they're starting salary at 60, that's exactly the type of job that I'm excited to hear about. So that's good news.
We had a, an advocacy meeting this morning for homeless leadership. And one of the things that they were speaking of is that one of the problems that they're encountering are the possibly finding a way to lower the barrier for people who are trying to, they have the money to get into homes, but because of previous evictions or convictions are unable to get into homes. So that's one of the things that they're really running into when they do have housing available. But I, that, they actually, we actually spoke about somehow getting that taken to the legislature to, but, but also aware of the fact that these are privately, some are privately owned apartments, complexes, so they can have their own rules, but, but it's that, when you take that into perspective, that, you know, the felony conviction, or the conviction could be from trying to feed your children, or the eviction was because you lost your job, not because you weren't paying your bills. So if there was some way to get some of the landlords to recognize that, but it's an open market right now, too. There are people that do have the money to, you know, to rent, so why are they going to rent to somebody that could possibly, you know, they're able to pick and choose, is what I'm trying to say. So it just adds to the numbers and the statistics, I guess.
I have a lady that calls me every few months. She's been living in her car for the last four years. She's in her 60s, knows the system. She used to work for a nonprofit actually before she had a medical, an accident, but she was able to get her Section 8 voucher through St. Pete Housing Authority, but she can't find anyone for rent deposit or to help her find a place that will accept it. So she's still living in her car in this heat in her 60s, so.
There's, there's a time limit on that Section 8 voucher too. You have to use it within a certain timeframe. I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's 90 days or, or six months or what.
Right. So we're trying to hook her up with someone that might be able to help, but there's barriers like that out there. She finally got this thing to help with her rent. She's on fixed income of 700 a month with social security and so. Yep. So anyhow, well, thank you so much, Doug, for coming, and I'm sure I'll see you at the next Financial Stability Network meeting.
Yes, indeed. And for you all, I do have some of my cards available if anything comes up. Feel free to shoot me a message. I'm happy to connect with you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That was excellent. Thank you so much.
Next, we'll talk about the CDBG Action Plan.
Got to find out, I don't know if I have to push the button again or if it automatically goes to the next one. I'm going to try. Oh, I probably need that. Let's see. And then it will bring me to my next. I see. Thanks, Jeremy. Perfect. All right. Okay. So this afternoon, I am going to give a brief overview on our draft fiscal year 2021, '22 CDBG Action Plan, but I never get a chance really to show you just a few of the highlights of things we've accomplished. And at the end of last fiscal year was our last five-year period from our last five-year plan. So I put together just a few slides on some highlights from our, our last five years. So in the last five years, we've spent approximately $7.9 million, and this is a combination of our Community Development Block grant funding, our Home Investment Partnership funding, our State Housing Initiative Partnership funding, as well as some supplemental general fund. This was predominantly in, in those, those four grant funds, though. And 3.2 million of that money went into our target area, which is predominantly follows the boundaries of our two redevelopment districts. There's a few delineations on there. On the right-hand side, this is, is an example of one of the projects we did where someone demoed a house without a permit on a non-conforming lot, was not able to build back and left it in this condition in the neighborhood on the top right. We were able to acquire that lot and the other portion of it, build a new home with, with partnership with one of our nonprofits, and someone became a first-time home buyer within that neighborhood. So benefited the neighborhood and provided homeownership opportunities in our community. We have been able to use some infill projects with sidewalks. We did a few small projects on Third Ave Northeast over by Largo High School, and then this was one on 14th Avenue Northwest. The picture on the left, you can see it really didn't delineate between the, the parking lot and where the trucks park and everything. We were able to go in and clean up and put sidewalk in there, connecting the neighborhood to the bus stops, to the retail along that area and so forth. So it pulls up from that corridor. We have a big project this year that you all just approved the contract for, I think on the first, for the Washington Avenue neighborhood just north of Mildred Helms, which is approximately 500,000. We're investing in CDBG for pedestrian safety improvements in that area. So these are some of the other ways we've, we've been contributing in, in the redevelopment district. We also, you know, most of our funding is focused on housing. Three of our grants are specifically for housing-related. Community Development Block Grant is really the only one we can use for those neighborhood improvements in addition to housing. We really have a focus on helping people preserve their, you know, the housing stock that we have in Largo. One of the big things is making sure they can age in place. So this was an example on the left, someone had a tub there, and due to their disabling conditions, they really needed a shower conversion where they could walk in or even wheel a wheelchair in at some point. So you can see the grab bars and so forth that we've installed, and it was a completely new shower renovation in there to put that in. And then on the right, this was an example of, we, we believe firmly in making sure that our households have protection from disasters, and so they got impact windows through the low energy efficiency windows. We typically put in new air conditioning units to help with energy costs and new roofs as well to make sure that they are secure, both energy standpoint and hurricane preparedness. This also helps keep their homeowner's insurance policies within a reasonable cost as well. And for homeownership, in the last five years, we had 33 households become first-time home buyers through our Sold on Largo program. And then we had another 25 units through partnerships with our nonprofits that we actually developed either rehab and, rehabbed and sold, or new construction homes for first-time home buyers. So really, in essence, it was 58 new home buyers that we had in Largo through these two programs in the last five years. We also do a lot of our nonprofit partnerships. Our block grant money is capped on how much we can spend on public services, but we helped over 3,500 people with fair housing, senior services, mental health services. This also does have some of the general fund contribution that the city has provided toward the Homeless Street Outreach Program as well. We also provide some of the operating cost towards some of our local shelters, and then also our homebuyer education and housing counseling classes to get people ready for homeownership. And I think, that, this picture on the left is our mental health program that started in this last five-year period and has been extremely successful during that time. So that's just a little bit of what we've done in the past five years. And so we're currently in our first year of our, our next five-year cycle, and this action plan will be the second year of that cycle. When we developed the five-year plan, we wanted to develop a vision and mission for our programs that linked in with the city's vision and mission, as well as the city's strategic plan, but really gives us a focus based on what our funding sources are, you know, what we do from day to day for the community. So our vision for the housing division is empower people to thrive in vibrant, inclusive neighborhoods. And our mission is to build community by investing in housing neighborhoods and supportive services. So we carry those three components through our action planning each year for the housing neighborhoods and supportive services. For homeownership, one of our big items that we are focusing on for this next year is working on developing methods and marketing strategies to help close the homeownership gap for minorities. That is very important to our program, and that actually was a recommendation out of the Community Recovery Team for the city as well. Rental housing, we've, we've done a lot of projects in the past with infill homeownership projects, and we're really starting to branch off more into the rental affordable housing market. So we expect to see a lot more of that rolling out. We're also trying to put together a rental rehab program for rental units, really focused, again, on energy efficiency and that hurricane preparedness to keep the tenants safe and keep their electric bills down in those rental units as well. So that rental program for the rehab will probably likely focus more on some of our smaller rental complexes due to our funding sources and so forth. And then we'll, we'll still continue our housing preservation and those programs, like I mentioned about the barrier removal for accessibility and so forth. In our neighborhoods, we have money invested, some of, big focus is still in the CDBG target area with pedestrian safety improvements. We are working right now on identifying different components to this with expecting design next year and construction in the year after. With the Washington Avenue area and can be other areas in, in the district as well, but we also want to work with the residents to identify some maybe smaller placemaking activities that can actually be constructed next year as well. So we have that in as a component that we could do design and, and construction, you know, for some of those smaller items as well during the next year. We do have some money still in there for slum and blight removal, so that would be a targeted effort where there's a vacant, dilapidated unit where we could use just for that demo to get that cleaned up on that site. So we're working on putting that program together as well. And then, of course, in supportive services, we are recommending, we've got our, our public service subrecipients that we would still be working with. We did hold an application cycle for capital improvements for public facilities for different service agencies. We received three applications, two of which are included for funding and one's on the alternate list, just because of the amount of money they've got together for it, and then if they can pull that together, we can fund that as well. But, so those three are Directions for living for safety and security improvements, Gulf Coast Jewish Family and Community Services for some safety and security improvements, which also had a hurricane hardening component to it. And then the third item that's on the alternates list, and it is for an expansion of RCS Grace House. There is very short demand for family shelter space, but it's also a big capital campaign to get there. So we were supportive of it, but it's on the alternates list for now, just to make sure they can get the, the rest of the funding in order for that. I do have a little note at the bottom, all the COVID, extra COVID CDBG money we got, that is being awarded this year, but those projects are for two-year period. So they will still be in force next year, still operational, but they're not part of this action plan because they're going to be awarded this year. this action plan because they're going to be awarded this year. So our proposed allocations, this looks smaller on the screen than I expected it to, but pretty much 70, about 76% of our funding is still going toward housing. It's a huge need for the area, both for housing preservation, homeownership, and development of new affordable housing. The other component to this, as I mentioned, is most of our funding sources have to be used for housing-related activities. So that's why it may look like, you know, the neighborhood's component is there, but only a portion of CDBG money we can use for that. So that just breaks down. And just a few other key items on the action plan this year. As I mentioned, we are, in our application cycle, we did for the current year nonprofits, we had put into the contracts that they could have up to two one-year extensions in those, so we are planning to utilize that for a one-year extension in this next action plan. And then also, and you'll see this in the city budget, there is a flip-flop of the CDBG and general fund money that's for the mental health program and for street outreach program. It's not switching the dollar amount that CDBG is contributing, but it's basically to streamline paperwork for the two. The homeless street outreach program, they don't have to collect income data, HUD considers them income-eligible, where for the mental health program, they're having to have people in extreme mental crisis fill out income certification forms. So it just makes more sense to swap that around to just streamline the process. So that, you will see that in the city budget as one of the changes this year. So, and then our timeline, usually we go to Community Development Advisory Board before this meeting today. Due to the pandemic, we got a little bit behind and they didn't have a May meeting. So they are, we are taking this action plan to them this month in June, and then we'd still be on course for a typical adoption month in July. We do have a 30-day public comment period that's still open till June 25th. There's copies on the website, at the library, and at City Hall. Our email address is right there at housing@Largo.com, and we are accepting comments and feedback on the plan up till the 25th. And then there's also the public hearing that the public's welcome to attend and provide feedback as well. And our deadline for submitted is August 15th ahead. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Are you getting much community feedback now?
I haven't received any yet on it. We do post on social media and on Largo TV as well. I'm not sure if the, I know I just sent in the request for the public hearing date to be added on there as well, but we're, you know, we're still accepting the comments in between. Usually I'll get maybe one or two comments throughout, and then our advisory board obviously usually provides feedback and recommendations, and they're involved throughout the process. So they've already given feedback on our subrecipients before we allocated money in the plan, and then they're just going to see the final action plan and make their final recommendation this month. So they've been involved along the way.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we are going to hear a little bit about Senate Bill 64, compliance, non-surface water effluent discharge.
Well, good evening, Mayor, and good evening Commissioners. Obviously, everyone knows me, I'm Jerry Walazinski, the Director of Engineering. With me tonight.
Shelby Gochman, the Assistant Director of Environmental Services.
And also with us is Mr. Ervin Kettie, the Director of Environmental Services, as well as David Black, the Manager of the Reclaimed Water System. So we got a lot of expertise here tonight, so hopefully we're able to address any of your questions you have. So this work session, presentation is intended to provide you a broad overview of Senate Bill 64 and what some compliance strategies can be to meet those deadlines. So tonight, we're going to, or this afternoon, we'll talk about, you know, basically what are those requirements, what are the three approaches we can take, and some of our next steps. Please feel free to offer comments, questions, anywhere during or after the presentation. So for those that haven't had a chance to look at Senate Bill 64, it's still, its status is awaiting to go for, to the Governor's Desk for signature. As it moved through the process this session, it, for the most part, without exception, had full bipartisan support in both the House and the Senate. So strong support behind it. It eliminates the non-beneficial surface water discharges from our wastewater treatment plant. It encourages potable reuse projects and makes sure that they are eligible for certain expedited permitting and priority funding. The eligibility for priority funding is the same as other alternate water supply projects from the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund.
Jerry, I'm sorry, sorry for interrupting you. How much money is in the revolving loan fund?
Well, looking at what last year's allocation was, because as you know, we have an open loan with the SRF fund for the biological treatment improvements project. When we became eligible for a loan, the Executive Board of the SRF is authorized to issue yearly to an approved project up to $20 million, and then it's spaced out. So in our case, it was a $53 million project, and, you know, would typically see, you know, three years of 2020 in a partial. Last year, because of the demand for, with new applicants, the Executive Board, and they do a really good job of making sure that they can balance out the most applicants with the money that they need. And in our case, instead of getting the full allotment of $20 million, we got a $12 million allotment, meaning that they were able to right-size us just to get us through that year, but they will be catching it up. So that was an example of the last Executive Board meeting last August, where the demand outstripped the ability for them to give folks their full $20 million allocation.
Is there a statewide allotment in total that the SRF is allowed to give out in a single year?
It is, and it's somewhat growing because it's a self-fulfilling payback, and the EPA continues to pay into that fund. How much will that fund grow with this, that? I'd have to get back to you on that.
Right, so that was obviously going to be my next question, because there's going to be hundreds of municipalities around the state that are going to have to do the exact same thing that we're having the discussion on in the next couple of months. So, you know, that's great that we have priority to get SRF funds, but that doesn't really make that big of a difference if everybody in the state's trying to do it.
And our legislative engagement during this whole session was those specific points to say.
Yeah, I mean, I'm probably, I'm obviously preaching to the choir.
There's only two ways to fund this, is on the backs of ratepayers. Coming out of a COVID-19 scenario and the, or through alternate loan processes, SRF for other municipal loans. And because it's hitting the entire state of Florida, especially the coastal regions with surface water discharges, it's going to hit instantaneously to everyone, instead of rolling it out over several years across different, you know, FDEP districts. So it will be a challenge for every municipality in our scenario.
Sorry, I.
You're spot on. Your concerns are exactly our concerns.
Thank you.
And then they also are discouraging the use of deep injection wells, and why is that? Because this bill is intended to get the most reuse out of excess water in each community to make sure that Florida basically has a sustainable water supply as our state continues to grow. The deadline for us to reach compliance is January 2032. We do have a, submit a deadline by this fall, November 1st, November 1st, 2021. Our plan will look exactly like many other municipalities. It'll talk in generalities without a lot of depth to it with that exact question, where does the funding from? What is the technique? How will some of the implementing regulations for potable reuse, direct or indirect, come into play over the next, you know, 12 months? So we see, and we'll talk about in our three approaches, how that'll kind of play into that plan.
Jerry, do you expect to get any guidance from Department of Environmental Protection as to what's supposed to go into that plan, or is there a structure or a format of that plan? Or is everybody just going to write down, well, we're going to do what you ask for, you know, and we'll get back to you later?
Well, there is a mechanism, as it states in the bill, that they'll give us feedback if they don't like what we put in, but in general, it's going to have to be very generic, just because all the communities, including ourselves, cannot develop a funding strategy even if they had known projects to bring to fruition.
Are we constrained from starting on any project until we hear back from FDEP? Or can we start on the project, or do we have to get approval for them to do it this way?
No, nothing prevents us from moving towards reducing our surface water discharge. The, and we'll talk a little bit about the strategies of what projects will be highly likely to see Southwest Florida Water Management District grant funding. Those with the most beneficial reuse of the water with a known potable water utility or whatnot will have the most favorable likelihood of being funded.
Tell me, I assume that reclaimed water irrigation is a beneficial surface water discharge. What's another example of a beneficial surface water discharge that would be allowed?
You know, in our case, it is irrigation one, like with the golf course at Feather Sound. That one is obviously going into their ponds with a redirect. And I will say, unless Shelby's knowledge from last week's workshop, it's not well-defined in the bill beneficial. But basically, if you can show obviously that you're using reuse and to SWIFT MUD, new reuses that displace the use of potable water are looked at most favorable. And we'll talk about some of our local strategies that we're doing right now on that.
So if you're thinking surface discharge exclusively, if there was, let's say, a water treatment plant that was pulling from a surface water, you could supplement into that. Don't really have those options here.
If you treat it to such a level, like if it's coming out of a river, you could replenish the flow in that same river with highly-treated wastewater.
They also talk a little bit at some of the workshops about restoring natural flows or wetlands that have been decimated because of development or whatever. So those are a few of the examples that some communities, some more rural communities or with more land availability also have.
The state for decades destroys natural flow in wetlands and then decides that the cities are going to pay for it to get it fixed. Good plan.
So at this point, let me turn this over to Shelby here and just hit your arrows to move it.
Yep, so we will definitely be talking strategy, but I just want to give you a little bit of background about our reclaimed water system. Our system is over 30 years old. We do have 93 miles of transmission and distribution mains and three tanks within the system. So we do have one at our plant, it's our largest, and then two are off-site to help with balancing flows in the distribution system. Our yearly average flow is 12 MGD, and we split that almost evenly between our surface water discharge and our reclaimed water. As you can imagine, in dry seasons, we're weighted more towards reclaimed water discharge, and in wet seasons, we are weighted more towards our surface water discharge. And we wanted to provide you with a map. So we do have a lot of branches within the city, and then we are also showing you the density of where most of the water is going, most of the lots that are served. So we would like to talk about three approaches tonight. One is ongoing source reduction, which is our Influen Infiltration Abatement Program. Of course, if we reduce what's coming into the plant to treat, we're reducing what has to go out, what we have to find a home for. Engineering, of course, as you know, is on a continuous program of study and rehab within our basins, and the rehabilitation is the important part. So we're very happy to know that engineering and the Commission support an aggressive program for CIP for rehabilitating the areas that we find have high II. Surface irrigation is a second strategy, so increasing our surface irrigation, and then potable reuse. Although we don't run our own potable water system, we will be talking about some opportunities. And these are our three approaches. So with ongoing source reduction, we are continuing our II program aggressively through 2028. We are focusing right now on Lift Stations 19 and 26, which are coastal and tidally influenced basins. So they do also see a change during wet weather as well, and this could also help things at the plant too. So this was one of our resilient projects. We're moving both of these basins to higher levels as well. So this is kind of a win-win project we're excited about. And then Lift Stations 3, 10, and three additional basins are going to be rehabilitated, of course, with the highest infiltration targeted.
Can we go back to the II real quick? So do we have any way to quantify how much reduction we would, we could see?
We're. To address that, yes, as we build our flow monitoring program. So Shelby, do you want to talk, talk to that over?
Sure, so you're probably familiar that we put in flow meters to try to find where the II is. Now we're going to be putting in flow meters after the rehabilitation to see the pre and post to make sure that we are doing what we hope to do, and we're successful. So we want to show you that success.
Okay.
So right now, we're targeted, as I've mentioned a couple of years ago, we're still wrapping up the current work ongoing to target, targeted theoretical flow reduction of 450 million gallons per year. And as we move through Lift Station Basin 2, we have certainly hit the motherload, and we expect some significant reductions. So, and again, we're targeting those basins with the highest flow, so flow monitoring certainly is our navigation point to where to go to next. Under our recent litigation settlement agreement, we do grow our flow monitoring plan substantially in fiscal year '23, and we'll be basing our next three basins coming out of that with where that flow prediction shows the highest.
Can I just clarify? I just want to make sure that you said when the project is completed, or by 2028 perhaps, 450 million gallons a year?
So that is the current basins that we have underway for rehabilitation. It was, the first five were subsequent to Hurricane Hermione, and we're just coming close. And we're just coming close. You may have saw in Largo today, about a month ago, we just completed all of the work in lift station twenty over by Wilcox and Indian Rocks Road. And just of last week, we completed all of the inflow infiltration abatement work in basin thirty-nine around the greater Pine Crest Golf Course area. So we're slowly clearing the books with the efforts. We've literally had four to six II abatement contractors in our city working consistently in our city for four years straight, targeting that four hundred and fifty million gallon per year reduction. So after we move to these new basins, that will be a new amount, starting with this nineteen, basin nineteen, twenty-six and those next ones.
And that would be on top of the four hundred and fifty?
It will be, yes. Great question.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so strategy number two is surface irrigation. So we will be talking about water rates and irrigation schedules, our infill strategy, and the system extensions. So this is our current rate structure and irrigation schedule. We currently meter commercial, industrial, and golf courses, but our residents are charged a flat rate for their use. And most of our customers, seventy-five percent by volume, are commercial and about twenty-five percent are residential. And our residential schedule is displayed here. So we do have some opportunity to change watering schedules. We could possibly eliminate no watering days. And we would like to look into this more after we do a reclaimed water capacity assessment to see how we could possibly operate our tanks differently, our pumps differently, and possibly change some of our no watering days and communication to our customers. All right, so another sub-strategy of surface irrigation is our residential infill strategy. So we sent out over a thousand letters mailed to property owners about a week ago. We made sure to educate them about their financial savings for our customers. You know, we're offsetting their potable water bill by providing them with reclaimed water. So if they're fans of irrigation, they should be very excited if they didn't know reclaimed water was an opportunity for them before. It's definitely a win-win for our customers. It's, of course, a beneficial use, as we were talking about earlier, and it conserves the potable water sources. So one example, if we were to get, let's say, half of the letters mailed out, we were able to get five hundred new customers. Well, that means about two hundred and fifty of them are watering per day. So we have six days per week. If we have two hundred and fifty properties watering, that's about nine hundred gallons a day per property, which totals about two hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons per day used by an additional five hundred customers.
Are you averaging that over a year? Or because there's obviously a difference between dry season and rainy season?
That would be dry.
Well, and ironically, what we're finding is people just don't change their sprinkler settings. It's pretty consistent, you know, even for those folks on potable water. You know, we could substantially dial back, you know, for that during the wet season. Most residential people, whether they're on the potable or on reclaimed, just don't change their setting. So it's a pretty consistent setting through, and Shelby can talk to their recent five-year average analysis.
Yes, so right now, it's incredibly dry, so I won't speak to now. I'm speaking on more of a five-year average basis. We go to about three million gallons of reuse per day during the wet season. So we do have a lot of commercial customers as well. That is what gives us our nice wet season steadiness of the three million gallons because we do have, you know, cooling towers that are using it. Of course, you know, weeks that are still dry, the golf course is going to want everything green all the time, so they're using a lot of water as well. Okay, and then our last strategy within the reclaimed water system is reclaimed extensions. So Jerry in engineering and David have gone ahead and looked at mapping and found some reclaimed-ready streets. And reclaimed-ready means that there's a stub already off the main for the street. So the street could more easily be connected, a full length of a street, instead of trying to extend a main. This is an easy connection. So there's twenty streets identified as reclaimed-ready. And there has been a number put to that. It's about thirteen million possibly for accounting for length, pavement, sidewalk, sod costs, and the number of connections. Also, we would potentially be eligible for a Southwest Florida Water Management District grant to connect to these properties if they connect enough homes.
Your connection threshold is that you need sixty-five percent of the residences to want the reclaim before you extend it?
At the city level, our threshold is a sixty-five percent connection rate. And to be eligible, if those on the street are seeking it, the fifty percent of those on potable water would have to request it for us to be eligible for a matching grant from SWIFTMUD.
I think it would certainly be worthwhile trying that. Several years ago, we went through a very extensive project to prioritize all the streets in the city that we thought would be willing to sign on to reclaim water. And as we went through the priority order, we never found one street that wanted to connect. It was kind of interesting. Now, it's different people now at different times, so.
Yeah, these are different days, yeah.
Because it's a sixty-five percent threshold. It was challenging.
Were we all, so in this scenario, being we're going to be using grant money, what would the cost be for a homeowner to connect? Or is that going to change from what it costs now?
So right now, there is, other than our cost for the infill projects for those thousand letters that went out, to the homeowners, there is no city cost to them. It's just the added cost to connect from where David has the line coming on to their property to the connection point at their irrigation system.
Right, but that's not what we're talking about here.
So here, it would be the city cost to run that new line on the street and get connections to those sixty-five percent of the properties. And then obviously with a potential matching grant, then that would defray our capital cost by fifty percent.
Right, so my, I guess my question, or more of a, I don't know, comment is, in the past, initially when we did a lot of the hookups to, this is my understanding of it anyhow. So initially, when we did a lot of hookups to non-potable, it was done with the help of SWIFTMUD. They paid for fifty percent, probably similar to what we're looking at now. Some of the efforts that we've done over the past couple of years have not been successful because there's a significant cost incurred by the city and there's no other funds that are going to help. So my question is, when we go to those households to say, hey, you can get, we can bring, you know, water to your house, but it's going to cost you something. Is that true, or is it?
It would be. Would that be that incremental distance between the pipe at the right-of-way to where their sprinkler distribution center is?
Yeah, so they have to hire a plumber to make the connection.
A plumber from the street?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so from the street, let's say, to their, wherever their connection is.
Wherever their well used to be, or wherever their potable water connection is.
Do we still have, we did it one time, but I think we may have eliminated it. Do we have any city connection fee they have to pay?
Not anymore. It used to be a hundred and twenty-five dollar permanent fee. Now, we've waived that.
Okay, okay.
And they pay for the material for the box, right? Oh, not even that, okay.
So what would their, so the cost then, I think, so would, their cost would be from wherever the stub ends in the street to get it to Hose Bib or wherever it's going to go from?
Well, Hose Bib, they don't have to do anything. The homeowner, it doesn't cost the homeowner anything because we give them the parts for the Hose Bib and that's all they have. If it's an irrigation in-ground kit, then they would have to have an irrigation person or a plumber or something make the connection for the irrigation system itself.
Is there like backflow and?
No, it's all backflow.
Okay.
So this next table might help. These are the twenty streets that were indicated as reclaimed-ready streets with street lengths that you can kind of understand the cost here for pavement rehabilitation, et cetera, and the number of properties. So if sixty, oops, sorry.
Is the full length of Rosary?
No, just smaller segments.
Yeah, the area that's reclaimed accessible.
Okay, okay. We should look to the next column.
And each street is distinctly different by what's in the right-of-way, how many utility poles are there, how many driveways, how big the parcels are. You know, so there's certainly a ratio of parcels to, you know, connection ratios. You know, there's also a cost to whether we have the line centrally located under the roadway or off in the grassy portion of the right-of-way. So some of our costs do vary. But, you know, if we were to pursue this, the next steps, we would go look individually. And I know David Black has already seen all twenty of these streets, so he has very superior knowledge. But kind of those subtleties to where is of those twenty streets? What are the lowest-hanging fruit, cost to disposal of volume-wise? And then send out individual survey letters to those property owners.
And they are obviously specifically just twenty individual streets because they're not subdivisions. Some cases, there's one street, but then a multi-street subdivision.
That's one hundred percent correct. And the adjacent streets could already be on reclaimed water in many cases.
How much does it cost to run one block north of Rosary Road? Yeah, asking for a friend.
Well, and for example, you know, the bigger parcels, I think, you know, we briefly talked about this during the CIP review work session. So we're also looking at other parcels around the city. And also, so where do we still have, you know, parks or the cemetery? You know, so for example, you know, the cemetery, nine-acre parcel. What's directly north of the cemetery, Ponce Elementary? So right now, we're also talking with the facilities folks at Pinellas County School Board to say, for instance, you know, do you have any of your school properties that are on potable water? I.e., so if we do extend reclaim to them and they're nearby somewhere else we can irrigate, that would make that extension eligible for a SWIFTMUD grant because we would be taking them off of potable water. So we're looking for those opportunities. For instance, you know, if we did extend it off of Rosary Road up to the cemetery in Ponce, basically the cemetery is nine acres on a ground well. And we're waiting to hear back from the school board what Ponce Elementary is on. So they're also a nine-acre parcel. So, but it's an extremely expensive proposition to extend that diameter, that line, I would think up Betty Drive or Betty Lane from Rosary. But if it could be defrayed with a SWIFTMUD grant, then it makes it more feasible financially.
Getting closer to my house every time you talk, Jerry, that we're doing good.
Well, encourage others in your area to.
All right, I'm going to go knock it on doors.
Yes, and of course, we would also hope that a lot of these people already have irrigation systems and not just Hose Bibs. We want continuous customers to get the biggest bang for our buck. All right, I'll pass it back to Jerry for potable reuse.
Before we move on to potable reuse, that was all residential connections. Have we looked at, and I don't know, maybe there's a lot of reclaimed connections along commercial corridors on commercial properties, or maybe not. Have we looked at that as well?
It is, you know, and, you know, our commercial corridors, you know, Olmerton and all of those other ones, unfortunately, very expensive endeavor to extend it into those highly industrialized commercial corridors. Always a possibility, but again, just like residential, even though commercial and industrial would be bigger volumes, it's that cash to, financial, to get those extensions to those locations. And at this point, between engineering services and environmental services, all options are on the table. We are leaving no stone unturned by looking at where those extensions are, looking at who would desire, looking at, for instance, the, you know, we've got two new parcels and potentially it's called Largo, the new Largo City Hall. And then potentially with the West Bay Apartments, should that project continue to move forward, those would be two big parcels that would be new users of reclaimed water. And we want to make sure where we see those future developments coming, like for all development orders, a combination of making sure it's within reach of those developments. And then if it is those developments, then have to connect to those reclaimed water abilities. So always looking ahead with development orders and other, you know, new businesses coming there. And then just, you know, communicating, you know, throughout the community that, you know, if you have a water cooling need or irrigation need, we've got the water to support it. Shelby did mention earlier that we are about to do a capacity evaluation of our reclaimed water system. Because we know it has, we have to figure out where its upper boundary of its capacity is. So we're going to look at it by quadrant in the city of saying, is there a different difference in the four quadrants of our city for our existing system? If we were to grow it for big new users anywhere else in the city, what would we have to do to expand the capacity and the volume, holding volume of the reclaimed system to get bigger, multi-hundred-thousand gallon to a million gallon growth out of our system? So moving on to that final strategy is potable reuse. And, you know, from between SWIFTMUD and FDEP's perspective is basically there's three components to that. There's indirect reuse, there's direct reuse. And along with that, with the water going in the ground, we're going to talk a little bit about what those aquifer protective measures are that FDEP requires of us before we could ever move forward with any actual project, should we choose to do that. So this is just, I know it's a small scale here, just an example in the local county regions of the wells that are either in operation for aquifer recharge. And the way DEP and SWIFTMUD look at it, they consider aquifer storage and recovery ASR as a component of someone putting the water in the ground, but it has an. but it has an actual user that's a potable water producer drawing it back out of the ground, so that's one term of art. The other term of art is aquifer recharge, where someone like us, if they didn't have a potable water user, like a community that has, doesn't have a potable water utility, would be putting it in the ground, and that would be called aquifer recharge. And then there's a bunch of variants in between, the different shapes and sizes of those markers show either operating wells, wells in construction, wells in pilot testing, or wells, you know, in the planning stages. So they do exist in the multi-county region, and again, Senate Bill sixty-four encourages more of those types of reuse. FDEP is working very hard to put a more distinct set of regulations to the requirements for direct and indirect reuse of the, of these excess water sources.
So is there, is there only two in Pinellas County right now?
That, that are in a level, they're down by St. Petersburg and, and other ones, yes. Over in Hillsborough, Hillsborough County is in phase five of, they're actually doing something in between, like an ASR well and a solidity barrier. They're in their fifth phase of funding with SWIFTMUD as they work on doing more protective measures of restoring the aquifer from salinity intrusion in that south Hillsborough area. And then they have seen literally back-to-back, five years straight of SWIFTMUD grant funding.
So is this a suggestion that we go to work sinking our own well, or that we somehow tap into St. Petersburg, which is, and how would we get the water to them?
Good question. Let's come up a couple of slides, we've got a couple of suggestions.
So I was anticipating.
Yeah, you read my mind. So basically, on a potential indirect potable reuse partnership, right now, engineering and environmental services is exploring a potential, and I stress potential, joint water project with the town of Bel Air. We've had one single meeting with them and their two consultants. Background, right now, with the town of Bel Air, they have their own potable water plant. They're drawing water out of the aquifer. Over the years, every year that goes by, that aquifer has grown more and more, has had more and more saltwater intrusion. So now, they are moving towards, with their consultants and their town commission, they're at a crossroads to where they have to decide between, do they continue to run their own potable utility and move towards a reverse osmosis plant, or do they enter into a water partnership with Pinellas County to get potable water from Pinellas County? One of the items we've proposed to them to consider is to possibly use our excess water as a means to improve the water quality of their aquifer, to lower their overall, if they did move forward with a reverse osmosis plant, one of the theories could be to improve their water and their aquifer to lower their cost of treatment in our RO plant over the next number of decades. So it's not necessarily how they would have upfront savings, but it's that cost of treatment over a number of decades where they would encourage the most savings. So with the town of Bel Air, there's potentially three components to this, that if the town of Bel Air, city commission and town manager, and subsequently yourselves and Henry were to agree we wanted to move forward with a feasibility study, we would then move forward to say, what would a feasibility study look like? And it would likely consider whether it was an aquifer storage and recovery aspect, was it a salinity barrier to block, you know, that saltwater intrusion? And then kind of as sidebar alternative, if we did either of those two, it could open up an opportunity to bring that same water to their two country clubs, potentially to augment some poor water quality that they have there right now. So as I mentioned to our partners in Bel Air about a month ago at this very first meeting is, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't look at this opportunity just to see if there's a win-win in this for both communities, and if both communities decide there's not, we say at least we looked at it. If both communities believe there's an opportunity to move forward with the feasibility, there'd be another checkpoint coming out of that feasibility study saying, all right, we now know more about what our opportunities are and about what our costs would be, do we want to move forward, you know, in a more actual take steps to do that? So two-step process, agree to move forward with a feasibility study, and then after the feasibility, a second potential step to say go or no go.
Do both the Pelican and Bel Air Country Club water now with potable water?
They do not. They use a combination of ground wa, pond water, and if I understand it correctly, reclaimed water from the city of Clearwater.
We may have a more favorable water source, though. They do want to know what our, what constituents are in our water.
Typically, Clearwater or reclaimed water is higher in salinity, and it tends to burn their grass, so they need to blend it with pond water, and in some cases, you know, during the dry period of the year, they just, it just doesn't work for them. So we want to be very careful on how we do this, because we certainly don't want to disenfranchise, you know, our sister city up at the, at the, at the city of Clearwater, but there, while we're looking into this, we want to explore that opportunity. If we're, if there is an opportunity to partner with Bel Air and do a joint water project, then along with it, we want to make sure that, that any of that additional water could go to those country clubs.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily be entertaining just going there to the golf course. We were going there for this.
Aquifer recharge.
Right.
Unless, unless there was a unique situation, and for instance, what we're exploring would be an interconnect with Pinellas County's reclaimed water. Pinellas County's reclaimed water, as we all know, goes up Indian Rocks Road. It passes right by those golf courses. We could easily do an interconnect with them with our reclaimed water system also on Indian Rocks Road, and then instead of extending our system to those systems, they are a lot closer with their distribution system, so it's giving Pinellas County reclaimed system our volume, and then using their transport system to get it up there. You know, would be probably the most viable approach to move big, big water to them, if there already wasn't an opportunity, because we already weren't pushing a pipe up there for a partner, water partnership project. And then, you know, we would have to look closely between where we have a line on Melonbacher or where we have a line on Rosary, you know, it probably would be cost prohibitive to push it to those two golf courses, extend the line to there from those two locations. So the biggest opportunity, and we've spoken with staff at Pinellas County, and one thing we've also talked about is, regionally, we're probably better off to combine volumes of water if there's a big water user or Tampa Water Authority wanted big volumes of water. We're better off as a region combining our flows, our excess water at a regional approach to be more attractive to the water authority or big commercial users. Somewhere else where one individual municipality or county couldn't meet a big, you know, industrial user's consumption needs, but as a total region, maybe those opportunities open up to us when we combine our regional excess water. So we've started that discussion with Pinellas County to say, hey, we are all in this scenario together. Those that have their own potable water utilities are in a much better position to reuse excess water. Here in Largo, we're not that fortunate. So in a binary approach, if the city of, or town of Bel Air approach did not pay dividends to us from just a feasibility approach and cost mitigation approach, if that cost, you know, SWIFTMUD grant opportunity wouldn't appear to probably a higher cost project to get the water to Bel Air, the lower cost solution to city staff would be potentially to put two, you know, water injection wells in at our current property where our wastewater treatment plant is. Then this is just notionally speaking, if, you know, we do have that year-round six million gallons of excess flow, in general, these smaller ASR, or in this case, in our case, it would be a recharge well, because we wouldn't have someone drawing it back out of the aquifer to make it an aquifer storage and recovery well. We likely would believe we would need two wells that could capture three million gallons each. It would have the lowest capital cost to the city, just because the piping and volume is the closest to the source of that excess water. So in a binary perspective is, probably our two most viable approaches are either, you know, a partnership, water partnership with the town of Bel Air, or this scenario here at the wastewater treatment plant. And again, these types of projects would have to go through all of the Florida statutes that FDEP makes us look at, you know, and, you know, what they expect from all of these feasibility studies are, you know, at the very starting point, the source of the water has to come from a plant that has advanced wastewater treatment. Luckily, that's us, so we already crossed that first criteria. Some municipalities around the city, around the state of Florida are not that fortunate. We are fortunate that we have cleared that first hurdle. Second one, from all the knowledge obtained over the last ten years for water being injected in to the ground, the first two major criterias is controlling pH and the dissolved oxygen level, and then there's a large amount of regulated constituents that we also would have to look at. And as we mentioned a little bit earlier, FDEP is also gonna differentiate where water would be a direct reuse, where it would be going, like, for instance, in the town of Bel Air, should they build a reverse osmosis plant? They would, if the regulations were in place for them, they would have two choices. Do they want our water to go in the ground, or do they want our water for direct reuse plumbed and piped right to our reverse osmosis plant? Certainly, the lowest cost to them would be a direct pipe to them, and they're out of running their wellfields, which are very expensive. DEP still has to finish developing those regulations for direct reuse. There's been a good set of regulations around for a number of years for indirect reuse, and either those are going through the rulemaking now to be more finite for both direct and indirect. And then just jumping through this, the typical process is, you know, once you've shown you meet that water quality criteria, then basically you can apply for a pre-permit application where a municipality or an organization is putting in a number of pilot test wells, and then you have to prove to the FDEP that it's performing in the way that it's forecasted to do for all of those parameters that they're looking at. And then if you're successful coming out of the pilot phase, then you can apply for the full permitting of your, of your well, and then, I don't know if you could see on that last drawing, depiction, where we have those two proposed wells, there's also two proposed monitoring wells. So that's a requirement that comes with a permanent well going in over its life expectancy that you have to be able to demonstrate to FDEP that your injection well continues to perform in the manner intended with the data coming out of those monitoring wells.
Is there any special type of ground that we're looking for in order to be able to dig that well?
It is, and that's what those pilot wells, pilot wells look like. And having, having a certified geologist in the room, I won't try to steal his thunder, but it's looking to where those impermeable layers are between the different layers of the, of the aquifer that's anywhere from the Florida aquifer and all the way below to where, you know, how much is, how permeable are they, how much upwelling are there? And that's what that pilot test is looking for. As you're drilling the pilot well, you're actually looking at what that strata is even before you start to put the water in that pilot well.
So on the, on the previous slide, you showed there was, there was an inspection well and a monitor well, so is that, you would, is that just an assumption of where those would be, or that's where they?
Completely assumption. Part of just the basic sighting work is you've got to be able to demonstrate in your pre-permitting phase, what other users are, depending on what kind of well you want to put in, and its depth, you've got to demonstrate within, you know, thousands of feet or, you know, miles, what other wells are drawing from the aquifer you are intending to do, just to demonstrate you have your well separation distance from any other. The highest standard is, are there other wells being used for potable, you know, potable utility use? Those are the highest criteria, and then it's other ones that are drawing from the aquifer, either industrial or irrigation. So you got to show, you know, part of that study is you're showing all those locations to where by just, by just distance-wise, do you have the distance at the parcel you're proposing to put the well in that geographically or by distance-wise is far enough from other, other users of the aquifer?
Yeah, and we also can't put our own wells on top of each other, so we've maximized our treatment plant parcel in the locations. We have the first. We have, the first one is shown by the effluent, and then the second one is next to the reclaimed tank. The biggest white circle on there is our reclaimed tank.
Right, right.
And it's also, you know, there's a large amount of historical information in our region about the aquifer and its different confining layers. So, part of it is just doing historical research of all the wells in the region, you know, just because the town of Bel Air has a set of wells up there does not necessarily mean that's the exact same geologic features that are underneath the treatment plant. So, you know, it can give us a clue of those around us, and it starts to help us understand better whether we have good choices or bad choices, but it's really that first pilot well that gives us the actual data.
Okay, thank you.
And then, you know, on the direct reuse side, we've talked about that a little bit already, you know, is that, you know, a large set of interconnections with, you know, Pinellas County and other nearby municipalities who all have excess water? And is that bringing a big volume of water to a brand-new regional potable water treatment process, you know? We certainly, in my first discussion with staff over at Pinellas County, they have their own challenge too with excess water. So, they, just like our stormwater wastewater task force partnership, the success that's come out of that could easily be extrapolated to call it a potable reuse partnership to explore all of those regional partnerships. We did have a conversation with the Tampa Water Authority about a month ago, and right now, holistically, Tampa Water Authority is solely focused on bringing water to South Hillsborough. There's a collective known shortage of volume of potable water, and they just got a very, very large grant from SWIFT mud to begin that effort. Talking with them, they don't see a potable water challenge in Pinellas County until 2035. So, given our 2032 deadline, we don't believe that will play out for us. The one challenge they do have in central and south Florida is a water age concern. Bringing water down from Pasco and north Pinellas and its dwell time in the piping system, it can tend to pick up different sediments and whatnot. So, one of the things that we talked about with them was, what if we gave you new water to augment and blend in with your old water? So, they found that very fascinating, but they still came back and said, we still don't have a water problem in Pinellas County. But, could they change their mind and consider that in the future? It is certainly possible, and/or at a local level or at the regional level. And as the population of the state of Florida continues to grow, you know, could some of those perspectives changes, change? Certainly could.
It's the Tampa Water Authority that says that Pinellas County won't have a potable water problem until 2035, and so that's not an issue?
It isn't an issue. They control where water goes in the five county area.
You mean Tampa Bay water?
Tampa Bay water, sorry.
Tampa Bay water. So, they don't think that a potable water volume that's adequate only for 2035 is not an issue?
No. No, they're, they're...
Are you laughing for the same reason that I'm laughing?
Well, I think here in Pinellas County, and correct me if I'm wrong, over the years, they've actually, when they replace some of their pipes, they've actually downsized them. Residential water use per unit has dropped considerably over the years because of more efficient, you know, showerheads and sinks and toilets and all that, so.
So, right now...
2035 is really not that far away.
But, their large regional concern is the giant growth in South Hillsborough. So, what they're moving forward with is building a 60-inch pressure main 27 miles across Hillsborough County, 60-inch pipe 27 miles. I mean, that demonstrates that water demand in South Hillsborough. What's some of the next steps we have? We already talked about, we're going to initiate a reclaimed water distribution capacity, you know, whether it's, you know, potentially a couple wells going in, you know, at the wastewater treatment plant. Obviously, we've got to have a means to store and move that water, whether it's on plant property or potentially, you know, across the city to other locations. So, that study's going to take a look at, you know, obviously, we already know what we're consuming. It's also going to look at, hey, how much capacity do we have left during both the wet and dry season? And then, we were going to have that feasibility to look at a bunch of different scenarios to say, you know, what does it look like if we were to provide water to Bel Air? What does it look like if we wanted to put three to six million gallons of water in the ground at the plant? What does it look like, you know, if we wanted to do some hybrid in somewhere else around the city or the region? And then, of course, continue to seek whether there is an interest in a joint water project with the town of Bel Air. Of course, if the town of Bel Air was to say, yes, we're interested, of course, the city manager and you would be the first to know for us to take that up as a consideration to whether, you know, we also want to move forward with the feasibility study. We, again, want to connect as many new infill residential properties as those responses come in to those thousand letters that Environmental Services has sent out. And then, of course, as we already talked about, we want to be, continue to be as aggressive for our influence in infiltration studies to reduce source reduction of our volume so we have less to worry about on the reuse side of the excess side. So, that's where we're at. Any comments, discussions, or questions?
Any questions?
Ask, ask where you're going.
Yeah, I think we asked him during the presentation.
Most everything. So, we'll share, as we progress with that continuing dialogue with the town of Bel Air, and make sure both the city manager and all of you are apprised of that. And like we said to them initially, if there isn't a mutual win-win in this, then we shouldn't pursue that. It's got to be both regulatory and financial win-win for both municipalities. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll hear as response comes in from the thousand letters that were sent out.
Yes, sir. And then, we're always going to be looking for connecting the Datsco parks, that can we get it up to a school property, the cemetery, all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll look at recreation parks and arts pricing fees and scholarship policies.
Let's call that out, and then, yeah, go to that. I'm sorry, commercial. Oh, actually, go to Escape. Go to Escape. Oh, and then, take your...
And you are the...
Tab at the top.
Okay, thank you.
You are fine.
Yes.
That's like McDonald's saying. We should maybe look at changing that to make it more residential law, first of all, commercial properties under a certain size.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Okay. Well...
Never know where my line is.
I know that the Tampa Bay Lightning are playing this evening, so I will try to hurry this along for you. The purpose of tonight's presentation is really to discuss with you the fees and the pricing structure that we use, and to make sure that we're aligned with the vision that the commission has for the community service. We're not going to review the fee ordinance, we'll be bringing that back later in the summer with very specific fees. And it is also important to point out that not every fee for every single program is, in fact, most programs are not in the fee ordinance. It tends to be more of the services and admission kinds of prices. But, we'll be looking at how we price things, how we set the fees, and also our policy on scholarships and some future considerations. Certainly, earlier this evening during the Alice Report, you heard the importance to people of childcare, and that is certainly an area where we're seeing a lot of interest and need, and so it's important to prepare for that for the future. So, our department, like many departments, has used a philosophy called the cost-benefit pyramid methodology. It was developed by a company called Greenplay, we've had them as a consultant before, and they are kind of the national leader in parks and recreation consulting, especially on this particular methodology. And when you look at that pyramid, there are what we call a number of filters that we look at to determine kind of what the price ought to be for something. And the first and probably the most important one is that who benefits by this particular service? And if you look at it, at the very bottom of the pyramid, it's, you know, it's a very widespread, community-based benefit. And, of course, at the very pinnacle, it's pretty much just the individual who's benefiting from that service. So, not only do we look at the benefits filter, and that filter looks at, you know, it's the community-wide value versus an individual participation, but we also look at what we call the marketing filter. And, in other words, what is the effect on this program in attracting customers? Even like stores, they do a loss leader, get you in the door, and then they get you to do other kinds of things versus it's a very popular and there's a high willingness to pay. So, that'll help you to determine where to price point something. There's the commitment filter, you know, what is the intensity of this program? Is it just a drop-in, you know, kind of, I'm going to try this out? Or is it highly competitive? You know, we've seen that with some of the sports. And the obligation filter, you know, is it our role to provide this service? And that doesn't mean that we don't provide a service that other people provide, because it might be something that's traditionally expected of a parks and recreation agency, even though there's other competition in the marketplace now versus the, somebody else should be doing it. There's the relative cost to provide, another filter that we look at, and that is, you know, how expensive is it to provide this service? It doesn't mean we don't do it because it's expensive, because as we know, as all government services, there are some things that the private sector won't do because they could never make money at it, and so that's just one of those filters. And then, there's the environmental impact filter. What is the impact of this resource or what is the impact to the resources or to other visitors? Is it low impact or high impact? In other words, the use and abuse of a particular, you know, you talk about athletic fields, for example, and how expensive they are to maintain and the wear and tear on them. So, these are some of the ways that we look at how we price, and we consider all of them, but the very first one is that benefits filter. And at the very top, and again, you know, we've had multiple discussions even within our own department about should something be at the second level, the third level? But, I think the two extremes and the middle section are just kind of what you want to take a look at, at that individual, the top level, meaning these are things that we're going to charge the most for because only an individual benefits, things like personal training, concessions that you purchase, merchandise that we sell, private party rentals, private lessons, we give tennis lessons, we give private swim lessons, we give a variety of private lessons, and then entertainment, the ticket price for a particular show. That might be at the individual level. In the middle, you have both the individual and the community benefit in some ways, and then, of course, the next level down is going to be just the opposite, community and individual. And again, we could argue these for hours and hours, but adult athletic leagues are something that certainly benefit individuals, but the community benefits by having healthy and active residents. Our specialty camps, those are the really focused ones. These are primarily half-day camps, really not necessarily designed for people who need full-time childcare, but they want to have something interesting and enriching for their children to do. Our clay courts, our tennis courts, definitely a step above the hard court golf because it appeals to some of the seniors. This is their source of recreation and exercise. And then, the Highland Family Aquatic Center, which is, I'd like to say it's competition for things like the Water Park Adventure Island and some of those, but it's not nearly as expensive. If you go down the level, community and the individual swim lessons, youth recreational leagues, after-school programs, senior programs, our summer camps, our adaptive programs for persons with disabilities, the community benefits from those services, but so do the individuals who take part in them. And then, finally, at the kind of the bottom of the pyramid, but the things that have the most widespread use by the community, parks, even if people don't use the park, they enjoy the benefit of the green space, playgrounds, our nature center, our special events that are meant to bring the community together, our outreach events where we go and talk to neighborhood groups, even the dogs get a place to go and they're owners, and of course, our trail system. So, that is, in a nutshell, how we try to look at our pricing. And then, when we're actually calculating, we also factor in how we calculate the costs of programs and services. And they have both direct costs and indirect costs. Direct costs would be certainly the staffing to that particular program, the equipment that we need, the supplies, the marketing of that program. The indirect costs would be, you know, the facility, the utilities, the maintenance, the kind of general staffing, the people who help you register for those things and do a lot of the office work, the general overhead. So, you have to really look at both of those. And for most programs and services, our goal is to recover, if we can, the direct costs and in some cases, a portion of the indirect costs. But, the higher the program is on the pyramid, the closer it is to that pinnacle, the higher the portion of both direct and indirect costs should be calculated or recovered in the pricing structure. But, you know, as a government agency, a public agency which subsidizes many, many services through taxation, there's certainly elasticity in how much of the total cost, the direct and indirect costs that we pass on to the people who consume our services. And that's where we're really looking for a clear understanding of what the commission sees vis-à-vis how we price things. And there are a number of different ways and strategies for pricing. The first one says, charge what the market will bear. Charge whatever you think people will pay for it, and the more, the merrier, all right? And it maximizes revenue, but it also makes for expensive programs. Another strategy, and again, some of these can be kind of mixed and matched, is to establish a cost-recovery target. is to establish a cost recovery target for each of those layers of the pyramid. So we might say that at the bottom, we're not interested in recovering any of those costs or a very small percentage of those costs. And that is something that, you know, we're looking for direction on. At the top level, we think that, that there should be significant cost recovery. And that is another way of, of pricing our programs. A third thing to look at is who is the audience? Do we have a higher toleration for greater support for youth programs or senior programs or adult programs? So looking at it by the audience is another way to, to price programs. And then the last thing is to establish some sort of a support program for those in, in need and others. It could be the market rate or it could be either of the other two. But separating out the need for, for support is something that we're going to talk a little bit more about in, in just a minute. To give you some perspective, I want to just give a, this is going to be a very quick, and I do mean quick, 10-year kind of overview of our, the fees that are in our ordinance. Because I think you'll, you'll be pleasantly surprised that we haven't made dramatic changes in what, in what we charge people. And I'm not going to read all of those to you. This is just kind of a sample of some of the things that we do. You will note that in 2015, we went in many cases from a, with a membership card, excuse me, a resident and a non-resident fee in many cases to a member, non-member fee. Now, a non-resident still pay a higher rate for their membership card, but once they become a member, they pay the same rate. But if you look at many of the fees, we have remained, and in 2021, obviously the same. So for 11 years, we have not raised most of those, of those fees. And in fact, some have gone down. So I think, I think it's kind of reassuring that I, I think that our residents and our members, the people who use our services, are getting a good value. We're not, you know, trying to get the very most that we could possibly get from them. So that gives you some idea of some of our fees.
Joan, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
For the Highland Family Aquatic Center, 2015, the two HR and four HR, is that for hours or?
It's a two-hour session. We had, had two-hour sessions during the week and then a four-hour session on the weekend. So that's why there's a little bit different, difference in price.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And these are, again, some of just the, not going to, you can all look at it. But the, but the only thing that has changed significantly there is staffing costs, and that's all based, that has changed a little bit over, over the years. There are certainly areas where, you know, we will be making some recommendations. One of those is field rentals and especially field rentals with lights. We have surveyed other cities and, and counties in the state, and we are very, very low and certainly not recovering the cost of what it is to provide lighting on some of our fields. That's a very expensive proposition. But in general, our fees have, have remained stable. If you look at gym rentals, I'll just point that one out. You see a range, and that is because in the fee ordinance, we have various categories of rental. Whether you're a non-Largo business or non-Largo individual, whether you're a Largo business or whether you're a Largo nonprofit. So that's why there's a range. The high end would be for non-Largo residents to rent by the hour. That's the price versus a nonprofit. Any questions at this point or I'll just keep going? Because I know you're all tied. Yes.
I just wanted to ask, do we, have the memberships maintained? The amount of people each year or are they?
Up until, up until COVID, we took, we took a nosedive and we're starting to recover slowly. But like many businesses, yeah.
But it's always been pretty?
We've, we've typically been between 10 and 12,000 has been the, the range right now. We're at about 8,500, so it, we, we did take a dip. We got as low as 8,000 and people are now starting to, to come back, so.
Because I, I kind of look at that and I think about the golf course and what we've talked about, kind of with a membership fee with that. And if we can maintain, if we can, you know, do 12,000 to 15,000 people for these memberships, I, just something that, you know, I've been thinking about is that for the golf course. But anyway, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's fine. So I think it's really important to talk to you a little bit about fee reduction versus scholarships. Because our current practice right now is that we do have a scholarship fund because we used to have a program that was funded through the Juvenile Welfare Board, and it supported a teen after-school program. We already had staff in place that were doing other things. We were able to use the same staff without incurring additional costs. So the revenue from that went into a scholarship fund. And we were giving out approximately $80,000 per year in scholarships. That JWB source has since been discontinued, has been for several years, and was not replaced with another program or, or program revenue source. So in order for us to continue to be, provide scholarships for summer camp, we tried to come up with other ways of funding scholarships. And so we had the Car Show, we've had the Mayor's Golf Tournament. We have had the Largo Taste Fest. All of the revenues, the net revenue from those programs has gone into our scholarship fund. Several years ago, the commission approved putting a dollar of the membership fee into the scholarship fund. And as a result of that, we've been able to continue to award summer camp scholarships.
Still at the $80,000 level or?
It's shrinking now. It is, it is definitely shrinking. We also started a number of years ago, the Playing Unplugged event, which some of you are familiar with. And the revenues from that funded at the request of the pediatricians and many healthcare providers who provided sponsorship for that program, has gone into supporting children to register for various recreation programs other than summer camp. So different sports and different programs. We've also received money from the David Price Foundation, a few thousand dollars, the Walmart Foundation, the Largo Kiwanis Club has given us several thousand dollars over the past few years. And of course, the Central Park Performing Arts Foundation has funded scholarships and for both programs and camps at the Performing Arts Center. For the current year, right now, 2021, 124 children will receive approximately $60,000 to support their participation in summer camp this year. But as the money shrinks, and we do not give full scholarships, we only give 50% scholarships. We, we see that the, the need is growing and the resources to fund this are shrinking. We plan to continue to offer the events that we've done in the past. But past fiscal '22, we are not going to be able to, to fund unless some new and magical source of, of funding comes up. The, the current level, much less increase it. And we know that there will be a need to increase. We also, you know, have, have toyed with the idea at some time in the future of being able to subsidize some senior programs because there are many seniors that, that have a need. But for the moment, our, our focus, and again, that Alice Report, I think, really struck home about the importance of childcare and the, the huge expense that people incur. So there's a lot of ways that we could fund the scholarship. We could increase how many dollars we take out of the membership and, and move it into scholarships. That's certainly one, one strategy. We will continue to use the net proceeds. But the third option and the one that I would certainly hope you will consider for the future is to use some general fund dollars to support scholarships for the future. So with that, I have a number of questions that we need direction. And part of this is, you know, over the last year, we've had multiple fund discussions over a variety of topics and, and mixed messages of charge more or give it away for free or everything kind of in between. And so we're trying to, first of all, do you support sort of the, the cost benefit philosophy that we're using as you understand it? Does that make sense? Does it seem like a good approach?
So, so my understanding is, is that you, so going back all the way to the first slide, you know, when you had your little pyramid up there, that's the, that's the, the process that you're using currently to, to figure out?
What to charge.
Where, yeah, all right. So there was another slide in there somewhere that had some other alternatives to... So there was the, the pyramid, there, yeah.
It was the continuum. You were talking about the continuums from lowest.
Well, it was, it was audience, it was.
Right, we're going to talk, those, those are, yes. Those are pricing strategies. Yes, and we're going to talk about those in another slide. This is just kind of the umbrella philosophy. If it benefits the community as a whole, should it be less expensive? If it's the individual?
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to put admission at Largo Central Park, you know? So that, that is in that, the wide base bottom of the pyramid. When we have 4th of July fireworks, we're not going to, we might charge people to park, but we're not going to charge people to watch fireworks. That's a community event that supports the whole community. And, you know, individual training lessons, whatever they are, that just, that just helps the individual, that'll be a lot closer to the market rate, if you will, or the cost of recovery.
Well, that, I mean, that is helpful and, and we will continue to use those, those things as, as tools for pricing. Now, there, there were several pricing strategies and, and, and this, this is where, you know, some direction is to... Those were the things we talked about, the market rate. I think what I'm hearing is, you know, for those individual kinds of things, the market rate is, is acceptable, is that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think if you're talking about an individual, you know, one-on-one training, obviously, I, I, I wouldn't recommend giving that away. I think that it makes perfect sense that if, if somebody is able to hire a personal trainer and that person comes from the city of Largo, then, then there's, there is a market rate for that. And whether it's here or at any other place, it's probably going to be about the same. You know, I think it's, from my point of view, well-established that, that, you know, I believe that, that one of the, the things that I believe the city of Largo should be doing is, you know, is providing... I, I look at Parks and Rec as a, as a service that the city should provide. And I don't believe that that should cost a lot of money. I understand, obviously, that there are costs that are, that are, that we incur for a lot of the things we do. And I, and I'm well aware that we don't recoup a lot of those costs as now. But, you know, I, I, I think that we, in, in, in everything that we do when it comes to, to that type of ser, that service that we provide, we need to keep in mind that, you know, I mean, I think the Alice Report today was a really good example of, you know, and you've used that example in, you know, your, your discussion today. You know, that there's, there are quite a few people in Largo and the surrounding community that, that, you know, aren't able to really pay for any services outside of basic living. So we need to be able to keep those, that in mind when we're, when we're pricing out some of the services that we provide.
So those are some of the options. One, I, I think the, the pyramid, do we, do you want to establish? I guess the question is, do you want to establish some, some specific cost recovery objectives for each of those levels? Or are you comfortable with us using the overall strategy to, to try and place things on, on the pyramid? Or if you look at the third one, based on audience, should we in general have lower prices on a partic, for a particular audience? And if so, which audiences should those be?
I personally disagree with, like, trying to strategize, like, having different price points based on the audience because we're making judgments based on whatever that might be. If somebody can't afford the particular program, then, then they, they can apply for and get the help that we can give them through scholarships or whatever. So I mean, I, whether there, you know, whether it's programs for kids should be cheaper or seniors should be cheaper, or, you know, adults should be cheaper. I disagree with all that. I think that if, I agree with, with the Vice Mayor said. This is a pro, a thing that we offer to our community and we provide. I, I don't, I think we should be, I mean, we're different than, than most of these. Most of these programs that we provide aren't, aren't offered by the market out there. Because as you said, you can't make money at them. So we understand that. You know, so I, I agree that, that it should be reasonable for our residents and, and I don't think that we should look at the audience at all. Unless they, unless they come to us and say, hey, I can't afford this, but I want to participate, then great, we have a program for that, whatever.
Then it begs the question of, of establishing policies to provide financial support to qualified residents. And, and how do we fund that? And, and that is really something that, that, that we want to, you know, discuss with you and, and, and hope that you will consider supporting in the future. Because we are at the, we're in the last year of available funding. And we know that, that the, the need is out there and we'd like to be able to respond not only to summer camp, because certainly summer camp is, is very important, but year-round childcare in our after-school programs. I mean, we'd be, at, at this point, I, I think realistically, we'd be looking at probably $60,000 to $75,000 that we'd be asking for, supplemented by all that we can do through the, the various events. And again, we're in a rebuilding period right now of many of these events because of things being shut down during, during COVID. So the only way that we can continue to support those kinds of services to people who really need the support is to consider some general fund support.
Does, does our daycare or childcare service, do we take the, is it, I don't know, visit vouchers or, I know they have to provide...
We do.
My wife did this for years and I should probably be able to, to speak more intelligently than I am right now, but I'm, obviously, yeah, it's going to be a rough ride home.
The answer is yes, we do. Early Learning Coalition provides some significant funding for, for families and we, we do accept that during our, our, our school year programs and we are licensed.
Right, yeah.
So, go ahead.
I was going to ask about the, the cards, the membership cards. Do people get those? Do people that are income qualified get scholarships for that? Are, are those pretty much paid for, like, by individuals or families?
We had for a short time, Walmart gave us money that provided funding specifically for memberships. But currently, we require them to purchase the membership outright and then we will subsidize the other.
Okay.
And the cost of a membership is?
Ten, for a resident is $10 a year.
$10 for the family or?
Per person.
Per person.
Per person.
And for a non-resident, it's?
It is $39.
Thirty-nine.
$39.
So if I can ask a, a couple of questions. Number one, it's, it's probably unfair of me to ask you, but I'm going to do it anyway. Do you anticipate raising fees in, in the proposed budget for '22 and, and memberships fees?
We are, right now, we, we've gone through our fee ordinance and there's a few areas where, where we are going to recommend, like, as I suggested, that, like, the field lighting and some of the things that are really more, you know, ability to pay and they, they, individual benefit. But we don't anticipate significant, no, we're, we're not recommending at this point. not recommending at this point. Because right now, one thing that we are doing is, is trying to develop, and, and some of it is a technology issue and some of it is just the logistics of it, a, a family membership and what that might look like. Because if you have, you know, a family of four or five, all of a sudden you're forty, fifty dollars just for the membership before you do anything. And what does that include? But we're not looking at significant, no, at, at, in, at any kind of major increases at all.
So would you, would you likely propose a family membership for both residents and non-residents at different rates?
We're exploring that. We may not be ready by the time we bring the fee ordinance in July, because there are certainly some things, because it, it, it's a major undertaking to, to have a, a family kind of all-inclusive or more inclusive package. But we think that, you know, we've heard it long enough, we just have to work out the logistics of how we do that and how we price it. And so I'm hoping by the, by the beginning of calendar twenty-two that we can bring a, or prior to that, a proposal so we can roll it out in, in the new year.
And we've had, we've had discussions at the staff level about trying to maybe simplify some of our fees a little bit. One area we've talked about in particular is like, Central Park Performing Arts Center is having more packages that are all inclusive rather than having a long list of menu items to choose from.
There's a price and then, there's these prices too that are also part of.
Right. And we have done, we've certainly done some of that. We've done that with our, our party packages. We've done, we've already have a proposal for the performing arts. It's, you know, it's always the tension between à la carte and a package. Because the first thing when you have a package is, well, I don't really need that, you know, so it's, it's kind of trying to balance, what, what, what do most people want in a package and price it that way? And then there's still gonna be add-ons. I, I will say, I did look at fee ordinances from a number of other municipalities and as long and cumbersome as ours is, it's not as bad as some of them. Some are even longer and more convoluted, so.
Be as long as the.
There's always room for improvement and to simplify.
Our old goal is always to be better, not just as bad.
That's right.
Yeah, right, for sure, for sure.
You don't have to be the same as anybody.
That's a hell of a slogan, Largo, we're not as bad as some.
That's our new logo.
Naturally.
Naturally, yeah.
Joan, when we talk about these scholarships for summer camp, how many generally do you, we do a year?
We do over a hundred. If we do, this year we're doing a hundred and twenty-four. I think the most that we've ever done was about, about that amount, a hundred and thirty? A hundred and fifty, maybe, one year.
So, so around a hundred?
Hun, uh, more than a hundred. We, we could have, we had more need this year. We just couldn't fund, couldn't, couldn't fund and couldn't staff, so we, you know.
So what's the ca, and I guess my other question is, out of those hundred, a hundred and twenty kids, do they generally, is that generally for the, you know, the camps, the big camps that we do at Highland and Southwest, so the day-long, week-long camps?
Yes.
Not the week-long camps, but the entire length of the summer?
Right, yes. It's typically, it's typically the parent needs childcare for the summer when school's out. And they're there for the, the full, for the full summer.
What is, what does that cost?
Well, it's an, it's an eight-week summer right now. And the base cost this year, if you figured in round numbers, about ninety dollars, I think, on average for a camp. So ninety times eight would be seven hundred and twenty dollars roughly for the full summer. A normal summer is ten weeks. This one is unusual.
Yeah.
So about a thousand dollars is what it costs per child.
And then we have to consider that with the heart, we had a very difficult time staffing
Oh, yes. Yes, we did.
Is there a residency requirement for scholarships?
Uh, no, we, but we do, we, we allow them to, because we get some money from, from other sources, we don't limit it to, to residents. Because like, Early Learning Coalition, some of the money that we get from them is not based on, on, on residency. But we do give a, a time for them to apply first and everything is on a first come, first served.
So, so the residents have a period to apply?
That when they can register, right, and they can.
Because I, it gives me a little bit, I mean, I, I understand helping everybody and certainly if, if you're getting money from a more regional source, that is to help folks. But, but if it's general fund money, those are, that's money from our residents. So it gives me a little bit of heartburn to, to sponsor scholarships for non-residents.
Right now, we have probably sixty to seventy percent of the children registered in summer camp, and, and even more than seventy in some places are residents. So, and that's pretty typical, those, those numbers.
I don't, I, I mean, yeah, I, I, I don't think that we need to close our summer camps to just residents, but I think, I think that's important that we, that we have the first opportunity for both participation and for scholarships to be for a resident, or residents.
So in your, in your conversation, Joan, you said that some of the funding sources that we're using for, for funding the scholarships is drying up, right? So.
Well, the Juvenile Welfare Board funds ended a few years ago.
Right.
They no longer fund that. And that was the biggest chunk of money that we got.
Okay, so, but what we have currently is the, a couple of things you talked about, the turn, the golf, mayor's tournament and, and, and that amounts to how much a year approximately?
Right now, the mayor's golf tournament yields on average about ten thousand dollars a year. The Taste Fest and Car Show, and about another ten thousand. We do get money from the, the Ferris wheel at, at Christmas time in the park, and that's about, about another ten thousand. And based on a dollar per membership, right now, we'd be at like eighty-five hundred. So we're, we're at about just under forty thousand dollars.
Thirty-eight, five.
Thirty-eight, five.
This year was eighty-five hundred, but it has been as high as twelve or fifteen thousand?
It has, it has been as high, and it's never hit, it's never hit thirteen thousand, but it's been twelve, yeah.
So, right, so I'm just trying to think, so there's a, trying to do some of the math here. Cause, cause I'm not, I'm not opposed to using general fund money. But I'm thinking, and I know this is gonna just really piss everybody off, but.
I'm gonna say it anyway.
Yeah, that's what I'm here for.
When did that ever stop?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
No, it's, but I'm, I'm thinking, you know, I, I don't have a problem, you know, I know we use that, the money that we're bringing in for the mayor's tournament and, and, you know, to, to pay back the city what it costs to provide the services to have, to, to allow this person, this kid to go to, to camp. I'm not opposed to just allowing the kid to go to camp for free.
The only thing that I would say, it, there were years when we had some fund, it's been a number of years when we had funding service that had no attendance requirement. And I will tell you that when people get things for free, they would be absent multiple days during the week. It was, it was very, very hard. I would strongly recommend against providing it for free. Because people need to have some skin in the game. And we have seen, even, even with Early Learning Coalition, which is probably the biggest funder of, of children, sometimes the parent has a copay of a dollar, you know, or two dollars for the week. But they have, they have some skin in the game and that really, what, what happened many times was that we would, you know, we'd be holding a place for a child in camp and they'd just be gone for a week. We could have had somebody else there. So I, I would, I would suggest that we not give, we, we don't give any hundred percent scholarships. We give only fifty percent of the, of the tuition. And that, that has really helped a lot of people. And we can help a lot more people at that level.
So let's say, the, the, the membership fees, they go into the general fund, am I right? So let's say that five dollars of each, of each membership fee went towards scholarships. That's essentially general fund money, but it's, it's money that's being generated by selling memberships. That would bring us up forty thousand dollars on what we have this year, so it'd bring us to about eighty. And, and as we look at family memberships and increasing memberships, that, that, that number may increase hopefully. Does that sound like a decent idea? Just?
Yeah, I mean, like I said earlier, I'm not opposed at all. I'm not opposed to using the general fund money, you know, and, and I'm sure you've come back to us with a couple of different funding strategies or, you know, ways to get that money. Or, you know, if it's gonna be a, a strategy like the mayor said, or if we just give you a lump sum in the budget, whatever that looks like, I'm not opposed to it either way.
Well, I do thi, and I would say, yes, you're, it, it's a circular thing because the money comes in, comes right back to us. One thing that, that, that we do need though, it, because we start, you know, registering kids for, for camp in January. So, you know, you need to, and, and planning for summer camp. So you need a lot of advance notice of what kind of pool of money you're going to have available to, to award to scholarships. And as I said, right now, you know, we're looking at, we probably will have about sixty thousand dollars for next, for FY twenty-two. But this is really to kind of give you a, a heads up on, you know, the need is out there, the need is, seems to be growing. And to get you really, you know, thinking about how, how we can support a really important thing that we do, which is childcare for kids in our, in our community.
So sixty thousand dollars is actually a hundred and twenty kids though, correct?
Would be, yeah, roughly.
And then the, the money that people have to pay, do they, can they pay, are they paying in installments or they pay the?
They can, they, we have an auto debit, you know, where they can do that. And, and that's really what we try to encourage. That's the, the easiest. But typically, we want to have either summer camp, if they're paying in cash, they pay it in full before summer begins, or they must be on the auto debit so that we can.
Did you have to turn any children away because you didn't, there wasn't enough money?
For scholarships, yeah.
So how many to really, do you have?
Do you have any idea how many kids we give them?
I don't know how many were turned away. It was about the same time that we, our camps were filling too, so it's hard to say.
This year is, yeah.
Were the camps filling up because you, you know, did you have to, did you have to cut participation because there wasn't staff available?
Yes, we had, we, we were not able to staff. In fact, we've, we've had two group leaders just yesterday who we had hired months ago, who've changed their mind. And so, you know, we're scrambling still to hire and interview a, a few people who are left in the pipeline. But, you know, we, we are down about seventy at, at Southwest, seventy slots that we could not, we would have been able to fill, but we, we didn't have staffing.
So the issue is, is, you know, one, if we had more staffing, if there was more staffing, we could serve more kids.
This year, yes.
Right, because they were there.
They were there, they're on a waitlist.
The slots weren't there. And we would need more money for more scholarships to handle a lot of these kids.
Some of them would need scholarships, not all of them.
Not some of them.
Yeah, but some of them definitely.
Ten percent? Twenty-five percent?
Two percent's probably a good.
Yes.
Ten percent?
What, sorry for interrupting.
No, that's okay.
So overall, how many, how many kids use scholarships over the, over the, overall? Yes.
About a hundred and twenty-five.
What's the percentage, sorry?
Well, above the, as a percent, probably about twenty-five percent.
But I think it's important to realize too, that there's in addition to the kids on scholarship, we also have the Early Learning Coalition funding, which is probably about another seventy-five to a hundred kids as well.
So they're already getting other money.
So they apply through that program and then come to us?
And then early, yeah.
So that's not something that we're doing.
So that means roughly out of the six hundred that we serve, probably two hundred, two hundred and fifty are on some kind of assistance. So it's a pretty significant.
Third of it.
Yeah, a third, or some kind of assistance.
And then if we had staff, there would be that many more kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, well, I, so I guess the question, which is not for today, is how do you get more staff? But that's not for today.
Well, one of the things we're gonna be doing is increasing our, our pay for these summer folks starting next year. But it's a problem all over with employers.
I would be a lifeguard in a minute, you kidding me?
Would you pass the background check? I don't know.
You know, you look a little like David Hassel.
Very similar, yeah. If I looked my hair grow out, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference.
I would.
Yeah. That was a great conversation.
Well, I think there's consensus to, to, you know, continue helping kids that, that need help to, with scholarships to, to do summer camps. And you figure out where we can get that money from, whether we take some off the top of each of the cards or whether it's just a general fund contribution.
Probably a combination.
And continue to look at different ways to, to put some money in the scholarship coffer. Because, you know, the, the insurance company today is looking for, to get their name out there.
Today, right, so.
So they can sponsor some.
Yeah.
There you go.
So in general, you're pleased with how we price things and you're, continue on the same path? Is, is that what we're hearing?
Yeah, the one thing that I, I, that a, a little bit of a challenge with the, the pyramid that I saw on the, on the third one down, so community and then individual, it had youth, youth leagues and senior leagues. And then the one above it, when it was individual and community, it had adult leagues. I think all three of those should be on the same level. Because I think all three of them build community and, and they, they help the individual as well. But I think they, they do a lot to build community, whether, whether they're kids or seniors or, or adults. So again, I don't think we need to pick our audience. The other thing that I, I like that Henry mentioned was that we're, we're kind of streamlining things a little bit on, on some things. And making, making, making it easier for both whoever's renting and, and, and our staff probably as well.
Yeah.
Lastly, and this is something that you probably know what I'm talking about, if, if there's an organization that's running a league or whatever, that it would cost us a lot more than they're paying, or a lot more, yeah, a lot more than, basically, I think that if there, somebody's doing a service for our community. And, and we should, we should make it, and, and it's, it's something that would cost us a lot more to provide, whether it's through staff and planning and all that stuff. And, you know, I'm referring to, I've had a couple people reach out from, from volleyball leagues at Bayhead where, where it's a little bit of a convoluted situation. And, you know, I don't know that there's a compare, comparable market. Because they're either renting courts on the beach proper. I don't know that there's another city that has as many volleyball courts as we do that are able to, and, and, and I think that's, again, it's a community thing. If we paid somebody to run that league, it'd cost us a lot more money than, than a lot of money. So, so I think a simple number for that type of thing would be, you know, like.
You mentioned, you know, more than one time that JWB at one point was funding eighty thousand dollars a year, but a number of years ago, they stopped. Did they give a reason? Did they say that we don't need it? Did they say it's not something that they recover, you know?
It was a teen program that, that was an after-school program that they were funding. And I think they just took a different direction, you know, their, their programs, you know.
Yes.
It was right around the same time that the funding changed from more of that out-of-school time to the summer bridge. And a lot of JWB funding now is allocated towards summer bridge. And the childcare for the summer.
Could we apply for funds from them again and see what they have to say about it?
I don't think they have a, a, a program right now that we could apply to, but we can certainly explore.
Yeah.
Since, since I'm talking fees, I know that, I haven't been out at the soccer complex in a while, but I know that it was a challenge to get to the point where, where you could prove that you had a card for your player, right? So, and the same issue happens at Largo Little League where, where every fall or every spring, you look at your card and there's no expiration date on the card. So you don't know if it's expired or not. And then you, you, you pay your fee and then, and then the coach comes back and says, hey, Brown, your, your kid doesn't have a legal card. So then you gotta go to Highland and, and, and pay up and then, you know, or, or if you don't have proof, you have to go in there and get proof. It'd be, I, I really think, it's just convoluted for parents, it's convoluted for the volunteers. convoluted for the volunteers. In some cases, it's volunteers, in some cases, I guess it's probably paid employees, but of the, of the different leagues to go through that process. I know that with the new software, we were talking, it might be easier for those leagues to validate. But man, it'd be nice to make that easier for everybody. We're not talking about a whole lot of money, right? Ten dollars a year.
For a visit.
What's that?
For a visit, yeah, ten dollars.
Yeah.
Now, we have, we have offered to go out to the fields and actually do memberships at, when Little League is doing their registration, so we can continue. But we can also look at some other ways to address that.
Okay. Or even, I don't know, I don't know if it's possible, but even for an individual to be able to, everybody's got a computer in their pocket now, right? So if you could go and log in and print it out right there or show it to the people, it'd be a heck of a lot easier than the staff time at Highland.
Someone who's not terribly savvy on the computer, I'm gonna say, sure, we can do that, but I know that there's a lot more to actually making that happen, but we will certainly look at.
I can, I can get my fishing license that I just updated last week in five minutes on my phone. So it'd be nice to be able to.
Paperless membership card?
Yeah, well, I don't know, yeah, something like that.
Get a QR code just so you can scan it.
Unless I'm not.
And then you screenshot it and then it's always there. That's where my insurance card is.
We do have a lot of.
I just learned that, though.
You do have the ability to get your membership card online now. It's the, the proof of residency. You have to show that the first time you come in, but you can actually purchase them online.
Can update it and then get a receipt?
Yep, it'll be emailed right to you.
Okay.
I like that, though. For, for, in those situations like you were just talking about, when they're doing big registration for Little League or soccer, I, I think it's great if, if we could have, you know, you mentioned that, that we have offered to have staff there, that's fantastic, but it's way outside of what we've been talking about. But I think it's a great idea to have the ability to just say, like you, like same, I mean, I go on FWC's website every year when I get the email saying, hey, you gotta renew your fishing license. So I just go right on there, sign in and renew. It's, so.
And what, and what happens and, and, I, you know, again, they're volunteers and they're like, well, I don't, you gotta, the city makes us do this.
Right.
Yes.
And then, so you gotta go over there and bring it back here and it's, it's a city rule, it's not ours. Rather than, here's a solution, just go to this website and you can print your thing out and you don't have to go anywhere. You know, it's just, I'd rather work together so that, so that.
Thank you.
Ian got more than he asked for, right?
Yeah. You can keep going.
Ian, I thought being last, you'd all lose steam by now.
Imagine if there was the entire crew here.
Aye.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
All right. Does, are there any board committee or board committee reports?
Just a, I have, well, so nothing really for the Suncoast League other than we're gonna begin planning our, our annual strategic meeting. So that will be held in July. I have, I have no, we haven't even begun to plan it yet. But as soon as I have some more information on that, I'll get that to you. Other than that, PSTA, I believe you all received the email, I was out of town when, when they did the little ribbon cutting or whatever, but the Pinellas County or PSTA buses are now allowed to drive on the shoulder of 275 between Fifth Avenue North and Gandy. So that actually started this last Sunday and it's, it's, it's only when traffic is below thirty-five miles an hour, the buses will never go more than fifteen miles an hour over the general traffic. And there, there's only a few on-ramps through there and, and the heavier used ones are, are now signaled. So when there's a bus coming up, you won't be able to, to.
It's a red light, right?
It is a red light, correct. It's, and it's only red light. So if it's on, you have to stop. There's no, you know, it's not like Atlanta where you're.
Anybody remember the green bar at the Ashley Street entrance in Tampa, downtown Tampa? Wow, that was, that was a nightmare.
So that, that's the only update I have for PSTA right now.
All right, any other updates on committees? All right, Vice Mayor Robinson?
I don't have, I don't have anything for me.
All right. Commissioner Gerard?
I have nothing.
Mr. Holt?
Go Bolts.
I would, yeah, really, I would just like to say happy birthday to my awesome, awesome mother. Today's her birthday and we celebrated it yesterday because I had this very important meeting tonight. Mom, I love you and you are the best.
All right. I can't top, well, let's Commissioner Finger next, she'll say.
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, I can't top that one, so I have nothing either. Mr. Schuber?
I have nothing either.
Any action items?
One thing, Commissioner Gerard's request that staff look into possible JWB funding.
All right. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.